All this needs to order and where you all can pledge allegiance. We don't input like it here anymore. Picture. Picture, yeah. Close your eyes. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Alright. So we're starting off with public comments. First off, is there any changes to the agenda? Okay. Then, public comments?
Alright.
People raising their hand, yeah?
Yeah, if anybody wants to have a public comment at this point, please use the Andrew speaker through Zoom. They will be happy to address you first and last name and counter resident. Alright, so first we have Roberta.
Um, I just want to make a comment. I just started reviewing the budget, but um, you're gonna have to really be careful with with budget requests this year, I think. With the revale and Ringe, we've, a lot of people had huge tax increases, which is not how we had planned it. But if we're concerned about our Ringe budget, so just keep that in mind that there may be a lot of disgruntled Ringe voters about expenditures this year.
Alright. Thanks for that, Roberta.
Roberta, any comment?
Yeah?
As board members, we have a unique position at the public line. We are concerned about students, parents, all of our staff, and our community, as is the administration. What makes us unique is that we are elected, not hired or appointed. Our fellow citizens have entrusted us to represent them and act in their best interest. This includes our elderly on fixed incomes who worry about affording heat this winter, our couples with starting families trying to feed and coat young children, our single parents trying to make ends meet, our unemployed trying to keep their homes, and all of our citizens who have sacrificed the taxes we create. As we review this budget, let's keep in mind its impact on them, as well as our duty to provide education.
Thanks. Alright. Is there any other?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Alright. Then, let's move on to the discussion. So I assume Ruben is going to take the start of this? Is that a safe assumption? You're muted. There we go.
Alright, so, well, I had my presentation on Monday, and so I don't have anything else to add to that apart from a few words. So the presentation, which I thought was linked to this, and that's why I was waiting for, but that's fine. It's not that big of a deal. Basically, what I'm proposing, after having us done as administration our first rounds of budgeting, that then after having some finance committee meetings and after looking at some trend data, I am proposing a budget that is, this is not a perfect number. It's probably within another, you know, thousand or so, but it's close to about 25,532,000 and some change. That's about $200,000 below default. That's, once again, the major cuts are in the areas of student services. I say cuts because they're cuts to what we would normally view as our actuals expenditures, that what we know, but not a cut in the sense of, if, okay, if you want to go to that slide, the identified, the special education slide, that'll be fine. Okay, that's fine there. Yeah, you can see that from what we were originally proposing, and those numbers in that original proposal certainly didn't just come out of the air. They come out of intel that comes to the Student Services Department based upon actual individuals, actual increases of personnel that need to come into place for students who have, either we have worked with the families on an, with an IEP who need a one-on-one or a shared associate, or, which is more common lately, people coming to our district with some, their documents already stating that they need certain levels of supports. So we need to provide those supports. So that being said, we looked at a graph on Monday that showed what our historical spending was, our actuals. And so we felt that this was a... Yeah, I think you passed it, but that's okay. That this right here was a number, that 7 million, though it's going to take some maneuvering once we have it with, you know, budget transfers and so forth through the year, but that's the nature of our business anyway. You're never not going to have a system without, like this, where things change rapidly. And according to the societal changes from month to month, we're going to have to have those budget transfers. So I'm not concerned about those per se, and we have never gotten within 150 to 200,000 of, I mean, we'll see what happens this year, of 7 million, so we figured 7 million was a good data point to go toward. Similarly, though, there's overlap between the, the surplus, I guess you could say, for student services and the next slide, and the surplus for general fund salaries. We still believe there's space to take out of the, the average spending, basically. It wouldn't be taking it out of a specific person, it's taking it out of the line. Again, it requires us to do some maneuvering later on down the road, but that's, you know, that's some work that has to be considered, but it's not something that we can't do. And so we felt that if we go back to that last slide, Nick, where we were before, that, that $125,000 on top of that $304,000 was a good takeaway. And to not ask us to consider having to decrease that, I think that's a safe decrease. We've had these conversations in the past, school board members have said, is this going to be okay? Because it's not the normal way of budgeting within school settings, and the mathematics has not lied to this point, and I don't believe it will, the trend data continues, and we have left ourselves a little bit of cushion there for the likely, you know, either up or down swings. The 111,000 for facilities, those items were items that were, have not been completed. So the person doing the main budgeting for that rightfully accounted that money in the budget to make certain that he had everything he needed in order to get those projects done. However, we have alternative way, one, we're in the middle of some of those projects now, and we have other funds to be able to make certain that we complete those projects. So we could decrease that budget by 111,000 from the original documentation that you received. That brings us, if you can kind of go down to that last, very last slide, Nick. That circled, you know, kind of circled, that oval, 25,532,000, that's not an exact number. Some of those numbers were rounded, and there was a little bit more, but like I said, within a couple thousand, it would be actually going, you know, lower a little bit. But in light of the conversations around facilities and how we took that 111,000 out of the original budget, you know, we could have the conversation today to look at the technology line, which is up. Now it's up because we made some adjustments last year, and so it's not as though it's a enormous increase from the time before. Originally, it's just that we were able to purchase some things in advance, and so we didn't put that into the budget. So these are things that we need, we need some copiers, we need to continue our Chromebook cycle. Actually, right now, we could use, you know, more Chromebooks. So, I mean, purchasing right now would be fantastic, and that's around 16 to 70,000 within the budget.
I'm sorry, I'm having real trouble hearing Ruben.
Is anyone else having a hard time hearing me?
No, I'm not having trouble.
It's just us, I think, here.
Yeah, I'll, there we go. So what I've shown so far, Laurel and anyone else who wasn't able to hear me, it wasn't anything different really than what I said on Monday. What I'm saying now is different than what I said on Monday, in that we could look at some, the technology lines to, in three different areas, if we wanted to pursue some purchasing this year. Typically, we don't purchase in advance unless it's something that we need or that we use, and new phone services over at the middle, sorry, the two elementary schools is something that we could utilize right now. It's not like, oh, we don't need it. And so we do, although there is a bid process unless waived, we do know that, we have a good understanding that we could get that done actually fairly, within a couple months, really. And then, we just got word that there are some companies that we typically deal with that have just received quite a huge number of Chromebooks. And so getting it while it's hot might be a good idea. The only other one that Mike would have to talk about, or if he's been able to find anything. Is it echoing in that room? Okay.
Okay. You guys all, if you have any of you guys have your...
I didn't...
Are you muted, Laurel?
Laurel? On that mute?
If you all shut off your actual...
My speaker is muted.
Speakers on your computer, yeah, not your mute, but your speakers. That should do it.
Yeah, it's a part of the issue, Laurel, is that your computer right now is feeding audio, so we're getting a secondary audio. So I just disabled your audio.
So the possible spending for things that we could utilize right now in the area of technology would be around 130,000 to 170,000. It all depends on whether we could get those copiers or not. I'd ask if this is okay, I can't see him because of how this is configured, but Mike, if Mike could just kind of update on what he believes about the ability to get some of those purchases. Mike Cotton?
Yep. Hello, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, thank you.
Okay, good. Yeah, the Chromebooks, yes, those would definitely benefit the district to order them now. I believe we have, believe, possibly. Chromebooks are not going to be easier to get, but if they order them now, would be a benefit to the district. And if they were phone system, I've spoken to a vendor, their capability is within our timeframe. That would definitely benefit the district if we were to afford it this year.
And did we hear anything about the copiers, or is that kind of in a...
That's still in, up in the air at the moment, I was going to follow up with that for next one.
Yeah, we've had some difficulty getting hold of people.
Yeah, I believe it's to do with the remote working and whatnot.
So if we were to be able to do that in those three areas, we could decrease the budget for next year's asking by approximately 100, like I said, between 135 and 170,000, is that correct, Mike? Are those the numbers that are correct?
That is correct, yes.
Yeah.
I heard 175. I heard 175.
Yeah, no, I mean, I don't see why it would be a problem to get those copiers. Again, we just, we're only giving you information that we actually have. I hear echoes all over, so, but the information that we actually have, that is true.
John, could you try muting yourself, like seeing you light up with the echo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, that seemed to do it, okay.
I would say just in general, for anybody in the conversation, if you can just mute it, so you have something to say. If you have a certain level of, like, additional speaker or some of these other additional factors, you're going to get distracted. It's just going to make it sound super choppy or...
And I would just say further, so again, another 175,000 on top of the 200,000 below default, that puts you about 375,000 below default. If, you know, I've asked, through the years, you've heard a lot of me talking. So I've asked for the majority of questions that have to do with anything else to be, you know, directed to the specific people who are overseeing those areas. So, you know, my principals are here, and the technology managers, and Carrie's here, Carrie knows all, so she's excited to answer any and all questions, and I know that she's, you know, has a lot of numbers and so forth. So, and has access to be able to find information as much as possible today, which is, which is good to have her computer and everything set up.
Can I make one more quick comment, Ruben?
Oh, it's fine with me, I don't, that's, it's fine with me.
Okay. I would like to ask if we are able to purchase Chromebooks and the phone system this year to have the bid process waived, because right now, Chromebooks are in high demand, I don't foresee any vendors reaching out and responding to a bid. And our phone system is currently, we put the high school, middle school phone system in place last year with the plan for the elementary levels, and it would be in the district's best interest to not bring in a second vendor to install the elementary school phone systems.
And Mike, when you did go out to bid for that one, you only had how many respondents anyway?
One.
So you had the one anyhow, I mean, I think there's a specific group.
Correct. We had specific needs for this phone system based on what we currently had. So our bid last time was very specific, it would be going forward too.
So, I'm curious to see some questions that... Yes?
So, I said, I believe it was Monday, that I would reserve some comments for today.
Yes.
As a Ringe representative on the finance committee, I urge the administration to reduce the budget by at least a million dollars. Currently, I put the 175,000, okay, into the general fund budget. It's at 25,357,118. In Ringe, we had a revaluation. Property values went up 29%. Not income, just property value, which is what people are taxed on. In Ringe, the tax on a 250K home, which is less than the average, is $515.63. I cannot ask Ringe taxpayer to pay another $500 next year to support a school system unless that school system can demonstrate that there's at least a $500 value increase in the education that we're providing to our children. The bottom line is, I can't sell $500,000 to someone who's worried about whether or not they're going to make their next mortgage payment, whether or not they're going to make their next fuel payment. So we need to come up with a number that's as tight as we can get. Based on our past surpluses, I think it's reasonable to reduce the general fund by at least a million dollars from what we started. Now, we're down 600,000, we need to find another 400,000.
I'm just making you. Okay, Laurel? So, Mary, could you put up a slide? Sorry, you haven't shown it, remember?
Which one?
That graph? Okay. So... We are proposing to decrease this by 200,000.
That, that specific one?
Yeah.
But from the original one, it was three, if you go, the numbers are actually down on that slide. 304,666.
So...
And decrease that second one by 125,000.
Referring to this one, correct?
The bullet.
And the 200,000, Laurel, that I think that you, because there was a number, there was a $200,000 number that was spoken of, that's the average amount that those two overlap.
Okay. So I would propose that we increase the 300,000 or 400,000. Because we have a 400,000 reserve established for students. And Carrie, could you tell us, please, how much is in this budget for sick day buyback?
Sorry, I didn't hear, I couldn't hear what you said.
Could you tell us what is in this budget for sick day buyback?
Sick day buyback? Yep. For the retiree buybacks? Correct? Laurel?
Correct.
Sick day buybacks are 236,675.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that number, please? Thank you.
Okay. So I would also propose that we accomplish that in this fiscal year. And I propose that because we're projecting a surplus based on current performance in the past.
One point, sure. There's some things that are in there. So, you're always looking at it all the time.
There's also, what, 127,000? That's in our...
I'm sorry, but I'm having a hard time hearing Laurel's, what Laurel is saying. And Charlie's is not particularly easy to hear either. I missed most of what you just said, Laurel, after the last comment.
Alright, good, well, here's the mic. So I said that I would propose that we accomplish this sick day buyback in this fiscal year because we're projecting a surplus of about a million dollars, and probably more than a million dollars.
Thank you, okay.
So I would also suggest that we pay for architectural services out of the general fund this fiscal year instead of out of the building maintenance, which the board authorized quite a couple months ago. Because I don't see that we are going to be able to add to that fund this year.
So I do have a comment, if I may, Marcia.
Yes, go for it.
Yeah, so I don't recommend the removal of the sick day buybacks out of next year's. I have no problem with paying things upfront, but the, you know, these graphs become a little bit nullified when we change the pattern of our, our efforts. And so what I mean by that, and this is a caution, in the end, you know, whatever's decided, you know, we can go forward and we'll do, obviously, we'll do our best. But the, if we can go to the next slide, right there, that number and the increases or the, the amount of difference between sometimes what's budgeted and actual, we took 125,000 out of that already, and we know that there's some overlap between the other one that we've advised to take out. Now, that was understanding that that money was, that sick day buyback was there, that there's, you know, and then some of our trends in the past is, yeah, we've paid, we've been able to pay for those sick day buybacks prior to the next year. It would appear that we might be able to do that this year, I can't argue with that. However, that overage then is the, is what goes into these graphs right here. So when you remove that from there, it removes kind of our past practice of how these averages even come to existence. So for instance, this year, now we had, I mean, I, I struggle making any decisions based upon last year's budget because of so many things that changed, but if we, but last year, we had about $200,000. We said, let's buy it now so that we have a buffer this year, because we don't know what's going to come at us. And a lot of things did come at us. Now, fortunately, we've been able to get some grants, we've been able to get some additional money from the state, and then Leanne and Leslie, that just this past week, did some nice work and was, you know, one of, I don't know, page full of schools that was able to get money, more money that was left over. We got another 111,000 that was brought to us, so, because we're really working to make sure that we're going to be able to give money back and to do things, and not to use some of the taxpayer money on things that this COVID experience has, you know, made us do a little bit more, you know, deeply in, in cleaning and personnel and so forth. So we've been trying to make sure that we've been managing things as well as we can. So that $200,000 from last year is still embedded in this year, it was a smart move to do that last year. But again, and we did that the year before, not $200,000 worth, it was, I don't know, maybe it was like 40,000 or 50,000. I know it wasn't as much. But if we change that, then we do, it's just important, you change, you change the pattern of what has taken place. It's not that it won't work, it's just that I have a lot less faith in it, that it won't work, because it no longer has the same type of equation, all the variables change when the practices change like that. So again, while it's, while I don't disagree with paying for that in advance, it would be smart. You'd save between 6 and 10,000 because you wouldn't be hit with a new retirement cost that just came our way. By the way, which are in the tune of 400,000 that we had nothing to do with. We didn't, we could not do anything to fight that issue, you know, it's a state issue. do anything to fight that issue, you know, it's a state issue and not funding what their obligations are. And they continue to throw that back on us. But that's $400,000 now that we're going to be removing from the, to, to make up within the budget. And I hope that through this process, we're not going to do it in such a way that's going to harm anything educationally. I think that would be an absolute, that would be, that would be appalling. So that's all I have to say. Now really for sure, I will not talk as much. I'll let other people talk. It's something to consider.
Well, if you don't agree with that, then you have to start talking about staff cuts.
We don't have to talk about staff cuts. It's you and Charlie and the finance committee. It is true that you said you need to get down to a million, but I don't know if that's what the entire board wants to do. So if our goal is to get down that way, then, and that's what is decided on, fantastic. Give us the number and we'll go and work on it.
All right, so other board members, thoughts? John, this, John?
Yes, I certainly am sympathetic to the need to keep our budget, keep our budget down and be conscious of our taxpayers and the impact on them. And I think we should do everything that is educationally sound to achieve that. Whether it's a million dollars or not, I don't know. I, I need to be convinced to that, but the bigger question is how we get there to whatever the number is. One thing is for sure, we're on a path to try to improve our educational system. Anything we do that works against that also works against our property values. As I understand the connection between property values and, you know, quality of education that's available. We're, we're trying to go on an upward trajectory where our kids are learning more, we're reaching more of them, there's fewer students who fall through the cracks. If we can achieve that, I think that's important and so I'll, I'll, I'll stop there. To me, the question is, how do we get to the, the budget number that we can live with?
Others? I am trying to see. I couldn't see everyone on this, so I didn't know if anyone was raising their hand to speak, so I was. Now I, I.
What I understand is that, I mean, I appreciate the property taxes and the impact. I'm curious how the current budget and the team projected or proposed what that means for Jeffrey and Ringe with regard to the property taxes. I mean, right now I'm seeing big numbers and I hear the revaluation issue, but I'm not seeing the numbers that fit in the middle. And so it sounds like we've tried to cut costs already. What, what is the final gravitation? If the, if the current number that's proposed, what does that look like for Jeffrey and Ringe?
Okay, so I have right now, if, if I have the numbers right, our original, Ruben's original proposal had a decrease of $541,443. And if we take an additional $175,000 on top of that by taking it out of IT for things we're purchasing this year, we're at a decrease in the overall proposed budget of $716,433. And if we do that, the tax rate or the estimated tax rate, it's always estimated for next fiscal year for Jeffrey would be at $13.32 and Ringe's would be at $15.15 thereabouts. So it would be going down from the original proposed budget that was at $13.97 for Jeffrey and $15.70 for Ringe.
What do you, what do you have for the total appropriation?
I have, hang on, I gotta go back to another screen. I have for a total appropriation of $26,852.293.
And if I plug that number into your spreadsheet, I come up with a tax rate of $16.99 for Ringe and $15.21 for Jeff. So I don't know.
I don't, yeah, that's not. I'm, well, I'm, well, so the original numbers I gave you were the local tax rate, not the state, didn't include the state. So if you combine it with the state, that's $15.21 for Jeffrey and $16.99 for Ringe.
Correct. And that's what we're dealing with. That's what the taxpayers see. So the number that we have to get down is the 206.
Mary?
If I, can, can I just, because some of this conversation, I, I'm now just kind of getting my head wrapped around it. So what I'm hearing, just for context purposes, and there's no statement here, is so that I understand, is because people's houses recently in the area, I think in both towns, but I'm not entirely sure, at least in Ringe, because that's where the conversation's really been at so far this, today. Recently had their houses evaluated and they've changed and because of those, you know, taxes may or do or have gone up as a result of the homes that they've purchased and got evaluated and with no changes to the school or anything added or anything of that nature, that happened. So now because that took place, the school is responsible for, and I am all for, and we have been for being certainly as budget conscious as we can. We've had years where budgets gone down in the schools because of the work that we've done here. But the, so that's, that's one thing I think is more of a question, is that true? And the second thing is, you know, when we look at the default budget, we look at the fact that the taxpayers have voted to put into place several things that are in the default that we've now kind of already taken back as much as we can and accounted for as, as best we can within the budget. With CBA increases, no one planned for the 400,000 plus 410, I think it is, $411,000 increase in the retirement. I mean, that, that's ludicrous, obviously, but no one planned on that one. You know, those items right there were, our goal is to, I guess, do more than counteract those as well, because that's kind of in the tune of about 850,000 or so. Are those two questions kind of, is that, are those true? Is that what we're doing here? Is, is a school making up, trying to make up for things that have happened external to the school?
The school can't exist in an isolated bubble. There does have to be a reaction to things that happen, whether it's under the school's control or not.
And, and also I'm not reacting to any change or any revaluation other than the fact that says that the people are going to see a tax bill from the school and it's going to be a huge tax bill from the school. And, and the question that I have to answer is, what can we do to get that number down to be affordable for the people who are most hurt by the taxing group? And let's, let me, let me tell you some of the issues that I get faced with when I talk to my constituents. Number one, class size. Why are we budgeting for class sizes that are less than 20? When in high school, when we have the state telling us we shouldn't have any more than 30? Why are we budgeting for 17 in elementary? Believe me, I support this. I'm just starting with the question. When the elementary's class size is supposed to be 11 or 25, why are we only budgeting 17? And that is not what we're really budgeting. If you look at the numbers for middle school and high school, they're looking at a mode that still has a physical distancing, because they're looking at class sizes much smaller than 17. So those are some of the questions that come from our constituents. Another question is, okay, I, I have a slide. Could you put up the slide?
Yeah, yes, thank you. So when it comes to class sizes, I think we could be going in the wrong direction, looking to shoot ourselves in the foot if we're trying to get up to 30 people per class. That, when you get up to even 24 per, per class, especially when you're talking about your main subjects, your math and your language arts, you're forcing your teachers into the role of classroom managers more than guides and mentors. And there's just too many to give them the kind of quality education they need. And I think that is where we see the impact, not on our best students who perhaps, you know, prosper in those bigger classes, but on our students who are quieter, who might have the intellectual ability, but maybe their personalities aren't as outgoing, whatever. I'm not saying we ignore class size, but to think that that's where the problem is, I think, works against what we're trying to achieve. And I'll just add one more thing. Last year, members of the convale board, school board came to us and asked us if we would be willing to participate with them in a suit to try to get the state to meet its fiscal responsibility as outlined in the constitution and as clarified by the Supreme Court in the Claremont decisions. We decided at the time not to get involved in that. We had other things going on. Now we've got $400,000 that's, you know, once again, the state looking to solve a fiscal problem by pushing more retirement costs down onto us. And we're supposed to just say, well, this is a problem, but you know, it's a problem faced by the taxpayers. We've got to deal with it. Well, we kind of dropped the ball when we didn't get involved with convale in that lawsuit, which at least so far has been successful. And we've just had a report come out last week from the state commission that was charged with evaluating school funding. And the report is pretty clear. It was a bipartisan report. It was included people who represent the big wealthy towns who like to call themselves donor towns. I like to call them free rider towns, but it included everybody though. It included a spectrum of, of opinion. And they still came up with recommendations that said, you know, the state has to meet its obligation as outlined in the Claremont ruling. And there are ways of doing that without raising sales tax or without using an income tax, but something needs to be done. And we can't sit here and say, well, we're too busy with local issues to get involved in these things while we continue to eat 400,000, 410,000 dollar increases that are being pushed down from the state. So I mean, I, I would like to see that cut, Charlie, that is going to push the tax rate down because the same thing is happening in Jeffrey, probably worse than in Ringe. You might recall that Jeffrey's tax rates, I'm sorry, property evaluations have stayed very flat since 2009, 2010. Well, they took a big jump this year, so we're probably going to get hit worse than Ringe in that respect. However, how we get there, you know, is another question. I'm not going to support talks that work against our strategic design just because we don't want to get involved with the bigger state issues.
Can I have the slide?
Yeah.
Just to be clear, John, I'm not saying anything but what my constituents are asking me, okay? We're putting out slides which have class sizes on them and they're the ones who are asking us what the, why those numbers are small. Now, what this slide is, this is just the general fund budget versus actual. We talk about a budget and we talk about activity. If we look what happened in 2018 and 19, we had a significant drop in our budget. Yet, in the process of doing that, we still maintain a surplus. And the same thing happened on into 2019, 20. We still maintain that large surplus. So the question I want to ask, does anyone know what happened to student performance between 2017 and 18 and 2018, 19 when we reduced the budget by approximately $100,000?
What was your question, Charlie?
Does anyone know what happened to student performance?
Did the decrease harm student performance, is the question?
What?
You're asking, did that decrease harm student performance?
Yes.
I know that it harmed our opportunities in terms of what our students could access as far as courses go at the high school. We did not have the same flexibility in the master schedule that had been there before. So kids were picking and choosing between, you know, things, they just, they couldn't take, many kids were affected. We could not take the classes that they had wanted to take.
So do you want to see your hands up?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I wanted to, to answer a couple of things that Charlie said and, and, you know, also, I guess, answer that last question a little bit from my experience the last few years at the high school. I can't speak to the student performance issue if you're talking about test results because I think that evidence has been very consistent. And part of what we're working on doing is, is improving that element of how we measure performance. I do think that's only one element of that though. And I think it's an important one that we're, that I proposed some things in the budget to address. Not increases, but cutting in other places to increase testing, for example. But just going back to the student number issues and, and the statement that we're budgeting for COVID numbers, that's, that's not the case. If you look at the actual enrollments this year in JRMS and CHS, not the NASDAQ estimates, but the actual enrolled learners right now, excluding those who have withdrawn from homeschool. We currently have this year only 63 learners and Nick, I don't know if you can pop up on screen a document that I shared with you. We have currently a senior class that only has 63 learners, which is a very small class. The current enrolled eighth grade population is 117 learners. That's taking out the learners who have withdrawn from homeschool. So just swapping out next year that the current senior class and adding in the current eighth grade classes, ninth graders jumps our high school numbers by 56 kids, back up to 386. And that's assuming that nobody who withdrew from homeschool comes back. And we've reached out to every family that has done that and have information that some learners will in fact be, be planning to come back. So we're not budgeting for class sizes of 18. We're back to two years ago, you know, in terms of pre-COVID numbers of, of what we're looking at for kids, even before we have learners potentially coming back from their, their current choice to be homeschooled during the pandemic. So any, any cuts to staff is like cutting from the numbers two years ago, which as Heidi just said, we've had trouble with some of our elective programs just in the last couple of years, trying to keep up with learner interest. This year decimated that a bit because we had to add those extra sections and sort of cap the numbers. And I put some other factors to consider that were related to the, the COVID situation. But we're not looking at, you know, we're looking at an increasing trend of high school enrollment, even without, you know, kids coming back from homeschool based on the actual enrolled numbers of kids. So that's one thing to consider is that we're not planning for small class sizes at the high school. We're planning for what we actually have in front of us. The other thing I just wanted to say is that, you know, back in the springtime, when I was looking at some leadership opportunities and I was really fortunate to be interviewed for this position here and eventually accept it, one of the things that excited me about this opportunity versus the two others that I was considering for being a principal of a school was the strategic vision of this district that I had been a part of helping to craft and the vision for learning that seemed to be guiding all of the decisions that we were making. And I remember sitting with this very school board in a non-public session and talking about how we were going to take steps, if I was the principal, and my goal was to move us forward and to acknowledge the things that need work, but to move forward in implementing the strategic design. And I'm putting on a big presentation with my team Monday to the ed committee and then, you know, the non-meeting afterwards to outline some of those vision steps and the concrete work that we're doing now to improve performance. What I will say is that if there's a movement to cut even further beyond what has already been done with the staffing levels at the middle high school, and I'm sure that the same will probably be true elsewhere, what that does is forces us as principals to step back into a foundation mode and figure out how to rebuild from what's left. And it resets the process that I've, I've been doing with my team because now we're looking at, rather than reorganizing, for example, for integrating STEAM and really helping our learners to become, you know, focused on careers, I'm back to foundations of how do I get enough English sections so I don't have, you know, over 30 kids in all of them. And I think that if that's the direction that we choose to go as a district, where we say, in the springtime, here's the strategic visioning, and in the summertime, here's our meeting together to talk about how to get there, but then every budget season we come back to, you know, we have to cut below the bear. I think we're going to, it changes how I think as a leader about how much investment to actually make in a change process if it's not going to, at this process of things, be the center point of a discussion around a budget. So I just want to share that as a school leader, I'm feeling a little bit, I don't want to use the word frustrated, but put out by the fact that all the work that we've done to plan and to implement the strategic design, even with this board over the course of the year, doesn't seem to be at the center of the discussions for this budget. And on my end of things, you know, I'm trying to only propose things where cuts have been made, so it's an equal swap, to keep opportunities for kids and do what we can to improve the learning.
Thanks, David. Hi.
Yeah, I guess I would just like to also comment about class size and reiterate some of what John and David have just said as well. I, hold on one second, I don't know what happened. You know, having been a teacher, I feel like class size is just one of the most important things for us to pay attention to. I think those numbers, Charlie, of 30 students, it's crazy. I can't even imagine having a class size like that in high school. And in elementary as well, I think we have ideal class sizes. And I just think it's a huge factor in what we're able to deliver to our students. I would rather see us try to make small cuts in a variety of places instead of focusing on that. And I think oftentimes that comment comes from, you know, people who are, yes, I get it, we do need to think hard and figure out how to, how to make this doable for people with their taxes. But oftentimes, that comment about class size comes from people's experience and what it was like being in school, you know, 30, 40 years ago as a high schooler. And I just think we are light years beyond where we were back then in terms of addressing a whole variety of needs and, you know, different learning styles. And we know there are so many layers of social, emotional things that go on for our students that I just think increasing our class size is not the direction that I would want to see us go in. But if we need to figure out how to find more money to take out of this budget, I would, I would rather, I don't know where it needs to come from, but I would rather spend the time now trying to look at where we can take $50,000 here and $50,000 there than affecting our staffing. That's it.
So I want people to understand, don't pull the message, okay? I am a strong advocate for smaller elementary class sizes than we have all today. I think that we're making a mistake by having an elementary class size that's any larger than 10 or 12, and at least grades came from three. Because there's documented evidence that beneficial students have small class sizes, especially in elementary. As they get into high school, you see that they should be able to have a larger class size because as soon as they graduate, they're going to get put into college and their class size is there, could be, you know, 60, 70 people in an hour court. And they have to deal with that. But I'm not saying to do that. I am not advocating personally, I am not advocating any reduction in teachers. I am a strong supporter of strategic design. I'm just trying to convey to people that you should have a sense of urgency around the budget that we present. That's all I'm trying to do, is say that. We need to say that we've taken every possible step that we can take to present to them a budget that meets the educational needs of our students, okay? And does not place the huge burden on a taxpayer. So that's, that's all of the messages I'm trying to give.
Any other hands out there? Everybody. I'm not necessarily opposed to, sorry, to identify $200,000 or roughly. But I have to wonder, like, what the, are we talking, are we talking 10 cents per thousand improvement? I mean, what is that, what is the magic number of a million? I guess I, I'm not really clear on. What is the current tax? I don't know. I mean, maybe it's very good. Did Carrie, did you hear that?
No.
I think everybody in this room thinks that. I feel like we're a lot quieter than we normally are. Like, I'm even having a hard time believing you guys are that loud. So we can just make sure that we're, like, I know that, yeah, I know that, like, half of us are here in the room together, like, board-wise, but we also need to project a little bit better. It's like I said, I need to grab time, so we can be comfortable.
Okay, so my question was, what's the magic number of a million? And what would be the magic of the initial $200,000 in terms of the? I'm not opposed to that. I'm just trying to understand, the impact on the tax rate? If it's $16.99, if it reduces it by 10 cents? Or I'm just kind of curious what it, I kind of, I feel unfortunate that we started this budget meeting and went directly down to our core numbers and haven't heard from our vendors, haven't heard from our programs. And.
I agree with you because the finance committee have benefited from those presentations. And I hesitated to talk about them because the whole board does not, and I think the whole board needs to hear.
Right. So just so you're aware, the panels are having a very hard time carrying us. And unfortunately, it's not providing the effectiveness of this meeting at all. So we haven't figured that out.
I guess the same audio setup that we use. We're all on the board meetings, so I think that the board needs to project.
Yeah, I suggest we take the slide down also. There we go.
It was the, the numbers at the base of the high school.
That's better without the slide.
So Carrie, do you have the current? I want to get away from that, but I guess just to finish that loop of thought, do you have the current tax rate and what would probably impact we be?
Okay, so are you asking me the current tax rate for this year?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, actually, I just sent the entire board, along with Ruben and Nick, a tax trend history document. So that can give you the information relative to the tax rates from a history perspective, and it gives you the current tax rate for this year.
All right, just before we continue into this conversation, I think we need to verify that we're all being heard. So I'm getting, I'm getting people popping up and I don't have any normal, we're having issues with people here right now. But it's not like we're having issues with some of the people in person being heard versus some of the people, you know, that are at their home. Could I, you know, do people verify, like, that we're being heard? Well, if you can understand what I'm saying, or if it sounds like a little water or choppy, I just.
Can you give a thumbs up if you can hear Nick?
Okay.
I can hear you and the rest of the people in the room with you, but it's like in and out, every other word, a lot of guessing. It's very difficult.
Do you think that's our Wi-Fi or do you think that's our mics?
I don't think it's the Wi-Fi.
I'm in another room in the same building, so if you can hear me, we're in good order. I would suggest that even if we take a 10-minute break and separate.
I think it might be the masks.
I'm in the same building as Ruben, Nick, and the other people, if you can hear me or not. And I think Susan is too, same area.
Yeah, can hear Ruben and Nick, Ruben and Mike very well.
Yeah.
We're also in different, separate rooms and we're not wearing masks. That would probably take away the.
So I'm socially distanced from the other people from staying off of the purpose. I know the class meeting people, so we're still having issues.
Nick, it's a little bit better with your mask off, but the quality is still poor. I think it's the microphone proximity.
Okay, so are we going to take a 10-minute break and scatter?
So unfortunately, I don't think I can, you know, stop the meeting per se.
Oh, it doesn't need to stop, it just to give people time.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Water break, bathroom break?
Yeah, so we'll take a small break. You know, just mute your, mute your stuff, turn off your camera. That way, you know, people in transit, you know, don't have issues. And the people at home, you know, go to the bathroom, get some water, whatever. We'll reassess, we'll, we'll get all this figured out.
All right. Okay. So. I'm going to go around that other link.
Would you be able to see if other board members need to have doors open so that they can separate? Question mark.
Ruben, you're not muted.
I was just going to say the same thing.
Oh, it's fine. I was just asking Mike if he could help out with getting them situated with the classrooms? If the doors were locked.
Can I just check my audio? Can anyone hear me?
Yeah.
Thanks. I just want, I'm great.
Much better.
So I just want to show you, look, Mount Rushmore.
Oh, cool.
We have such talented students. They're just amazing. I think I just got locked in. Does anybody else feel like the Breakfast Club right now? I kind of feel like the Breakfast Club. Sorry, that's my role, comedy. I don't.
I appreciate it, Patty.
Thanks.
I think the kids in the first learning pods felt that way also. They're so unused to being in a school that's pretty much empty. They were walking around just.
It is a weird feeling, although our art room is really the best, not for nothing.
You're going to get distracted, Patty.
I am going to really, I saw some colored pencils over there. That seemed like a good stress reliever. All right, can you hear me? Am I echoing?
Oh, you're good.
I think it's good.
What's up?
You know where Charlie went?
Charlie, where are you?
I'm here, can you hear me?
I can hear you, but we just wondered where you were, actually.
Um, I'm in the cafeteria exercise room.
Ah, okay. I see, you can probably take off your mask. Oh, how nice. There you are. Okay. I forgot, I had it on, actually.
Charlie is still pretty echoey.
What is?
Charlie? You're very echoey, like you're in a wind tunnel.
That's because I have a wind tunnel above me. There's a fan or a blow up there that's running.
Right, but I think it's just you're in a cavernous room, so it echoes.
That's probably true, too.
So I don't think we're all back yet, are we?
I don't think we're all back yet, are we?
So Nick, if you're in your room alone, you could probably take your mask off too.
I'll keep it off for now. Obviously, you know, we can get members in public if they can go up there.
Yeah.
We're waiting on Laurel. And then she completely disconnected, so.
Okay, I can tell exactly where all of you guys moved to. I see one art room, one assistant principal office bulletin board. I see one exercise room. Oh, and I don't see Laurel yet. Excuse me, not exercise room, high school cafeteria.
Formerly known as, yeah.
Yes, the room formerly known as the exercise room. And Laurel looks like she's in the technology room.
So we can all effectively be unmuted too, right? Unless, you know, there's background noise.
Yeah, I mean, now that we're a little more isolated, it'll make it a little bit easier.
All right.
I think we, I think we have everybody, you know, at least logged in at this point. You know, everybody's here, but I'm not sure if everybody is here yet.
Right.
Because, you know, Mike looks like he's returning. Jen's got her picture off. Kelly's just turned hers back on, so I think that is, as soon as we get.
I see, Roberta has her hand raised, just so you're aware.
She does? Okay.
He was asking that Charlie's sound be muted unless he's speaking because of the air exchange that's going on in that area. We have our units pumping pretty heavily outside air.
Does my space key work when I'm muted?
Now, I guess before we start back on, since we're waiting on Jen anyway, can people actually understand Charlie? Because it seems like he, he's got. Yeah, let's.
I think it would be better if he moved to the room that is the compass area.
Yeah.
We'd have a better signal and privacy. It's right next to him.
Even the other side of the cafeteria where there's actually a drop ceiling works, is a lot less echoey. That's the side that Charlie's in is just, there's no ceiling, so it's going to be echoey.
May I suggest, just from the conversation that just happened? I mean, I went over some overview items on Monday that summarizes some things. I know that David's talked a little bit. If maybe each of the principals could, or if they want to give maybe a five minute overview or maybe, you know, five to 10, I don't want to, if it's, if it's longer. You know, high school has a lot more movement in concept, just so that you can hear the educational side of things. And then the other piece is right now, Carrie reminds us that with the 175, if it's 175, I think it is, with the 175 reduction within the area of technology, we're at 716,000 and some change. So we're about 283 to 285,000 off that million, just to keep that in people's heads. And Laurel put on the table, putting, you know, the 230,000 for the staff buybacks. You know, I've expressed not opposition, but just concerns because of other cuts that have already been made and the, and the patterns. I think we, knowing what our spending patterns are and so forth and how we go, it's, it's a, you know, that would, that item right there would actually also decrease your default budget. So it'll be decreasing your default budget and the operating budget at the exact same time, if that were done, which takes, you know, just, just to kind of give people all the insight.
The way you just said that helps because when you were talking before, I was fuzzy. But the fact that you just said it that way, you're reducing both your default and at the same time. That makes more sense. Thank you.
Yeah, and so that, well, that happens, but also what the, what I said before was some of those graphs that we said within the area of staff salaries and so forth, that we, when we've had over, when we had surplus of 400,000 plus or so in those areas, often that number, what's been included in that number is the fact that we have prepaid those areas. And so that's been within the budget to do so. So you narrow things significantly is my point. I'm not saying it's impossible. I'm just saying we need to be careful.
Right. Okay, so the other thing that I've been, you know, sitting here thinking about is I feel like we're in a perfect storm here because we, you know, we know that the state isn't doing their, their, what they're supposed, what they should be doing. And we've known that for decades, but we're in Hampshire and for whatever reason, we don't seem to change that. Um, then we are, are looking at the fact that both towns have been, you know, reassessed, reevaluated and, and things have gone up. Then we look at COVID, which is a situation that has made challenging life in general. And that includes, you know, people maybe having issues with employment and income and all of those things. And then we also are, you know, trying to move forward with a strategic design and plan that we have been putting together for a couple of years now, three years now. And all of that, you know, they're like, it just feels like a perfect storm. There's so many pieces that are coming together that just the timing of them or, you know, the unexpectedness of a pandemic, you know, all those things. And now it's like, okay, now find something fair. You know, you're dealing with a lot of unfair things and trying to make it fair. And I guess I'm, would not like to see staff being cut. Yes, maybe class sizes appear to be small. They're smaller now because of COVID. But, you know. But I also think because of this COVID situation and having to do remote, even though we're doing a lot of really hard work and we're doing the pods and all of these things, there's still going to be kids that they're going to need extra support. And so taking away staff that are going to be able to give that support to help close the gaps that may have been caused by a pandemic is an issue. So, I don't know, I just, it's, it feels like a perfect storm and we need to find our way through the storm. And I know that the finance committee has had the benefit of hearing the administrators, but the rest of us haven't as much. So I think I agree totally with Ruben. If we can hear from the administrators and hear, maybe not their full presentation, but, you know, the key pieces that would really help with the understanding and maybe ideas that they might have, again, like Heidi was saying, a little here, a little there, a little there, might help. That's me.
So I recommend, if it would be okay, Susan, would you be willing to make a few, I know that you also had a couple of documents that you might be able to bring up if given the opportunity. I don't know if you have those with you. But you might be able to verbally just do it without that anyway.
Yes, you guys either send these things, I can put them up on the screen. Anybody who's available, this also is the opportunity to share their own screen. So if you have something on your own desktop or computer, you can also pull that up.
Oh, great. Yeah.
Okay, obviously Kelly and I work very closely together on budget. So some of the things that I would talk about actually are the two of us together making some choices. And the biggest area around that is some personnel thoughts. So I'll save those for a moment later. Within the actual budget that I'm proposing at JGS, there are not huge changes in line items such as supplies, books, et cetera. Overall, what I had given to Ruben and Carrie for draft one had a non-personnel increase of 3877, as far as 33, as 3,877. And really most of that was a couple of subscriptions, online subscriptions that we're proposing. We've adopted a new primary math resource called Zern. We went through a process with the board where we looked at that and adopted it. That has an annual online subscription fee that allows students to work on lessons at an individualized rate and allows teachers to differentiate very easily. It's been interesting this fall to see as students come back, when teachers spotted gap, they can move them into the program in that spot so fluidly. That has been a big advantage for us. So other than those online subscriptions, any changes are, are quite minor and often include shifting 100 or 200 here, you know, from there to here. So personnel, overall between Kelly and I, between RMS and JGS, we're not proposing an overall change in the number for personnel. We are proposing, based on our best estimate of what enrollment will be next year, some shifting. And one of those pieces involves looking at JGS projections. So let me see if I can pull up a sheet that I worked on. So Kelly will talk a little bit about a possible decrease in enrollment at Ringe. And I am looking at, while overall not a significant increase in the overall number, we have an unusual situation with our kindergarten this year. The top chart is a hypothetical configuration. If we were not in remote, if we were not limiting class sizes due to COVID, these numbers show the currently enrolled students, we would be at 19 and 20 per kindergarten class. However, if the five students who are being homeschooled at kindergarten had not chosen that and we, we had every indication they had previously enrolled last spring, we had every indication that they would be coming, we would be at 21 per kindergarten class, which is well above certainly what our district vision has in mind for a primary grade. And certainly Charlie, thank you for speaking earlier about the importance of lower class sizes at early elementary. So what I would hope to see next year is being able to switch from 17 general education classrooms, which we have maintained for several years, to 18 general education classrooms so that we could bring our kindergarten first and second grade down to the targeted numbers of enrollment. And you'll see when Kelly talks how that is not adding new money to the budget, but shifting. The other key thing that affects both RMS and JGS is looking at technology. Share again. Certainly from where we were last March to where we are now is a light years indifference. We have had a part-time tech or a technology teacher that is full-time, but split between the two elementary schools 50/50. So the remote learning during COVID has certainly emphasized that there is much more possible for elementary students than we ever imagined as far as where they can get to with technology. And by getting to that spot at a younger grade, it allows middle school and high school to really soar from there. That they don't need to focus on this, some of the basic skills in technology at those levels. They can really be prepped to do, to use technology to apply to higher level challenges, higher order thinking. So whether or not we had experienced COVID, there are logistics, logistical challenges to two schools sharing a position. I speak from that very personally. I for four years worked half-time in Ringe and half-time in Jaffrey. And I would tell you, the first opportunity I had to get in one school, I took. Within a half-time technology position, that teacher was providing instruction for over 650 kids. And what she did with that, she worked very hard. It was amazing. She learned their names. She, you know, but obviously that high of a caseload has many drawbacks. The other big piece of this position is moving toward greater integration within the classroom. Not seeing it as a special that they go to, they do stuff, they come back. I'm a classroom teacher. I don't really know what they did there, vice versa. It's really having the technology teacher work collaboratively with classroom teachers, with specialists, with other instructional personnel. And again, a split position between two schools. Classroom teachers alone, there are about 38 people to collaborate with. And then there are six specialists and then there are Title I teachers and Learning Center teachers, et cetera. So logistically, the position has always had challenges. At this time, we see benefits of moving to a full-time technology teacher for each building. We'd anticipate that the bulk of that time would be instructional. Certainly at least 50% would be pull-out specials, implementing the technology progressions, reinforcing digital citizenship, which is learning how to behave online, how to present yourself ethically online and so forth. But the next 30% would focus on that instructional collaboration, being able to do projects with a, side-by-side with a classroom teacher, which means job embedded professional development for staff and also being able to reach out to families and support them so that, you know, hopefully we're at, reaching the end soon or within the next year of going to remote learning. But, you know, it's important for us to bridge that gap between home and school. The person would also, and we're anticipating again about 20%, be able to help with some of our in-building logistics, helping somebody troubleshoot, maintaining our building level inventory of devices, helping distribute equipment out and so forth and so on. Okay. So I think that, so again, when Kelly talks, you'll see that shift does not result in an overall staffing increase, but is a reallocation of our resources. So Ruben, do you think that covers it? Can I turn it over to Kelly?
Yeah, the only thing.
Yeah, the only thing, yeah, you covered it really well. I think that, and some of what Kelly will say might have some redundancies as well, and I think that's good. That's the whole point. And making sure that as we go forward, we go forward in a uniform manner. When I think David speaks, David, I would ask that you explain further the district. Just, you know, make it short. I mentioned it on Monday, but if you could talk about the district reason for the technology element, okay, that would be, that will help glue things together. But yeah, Kelly, great. Thank you.
Do, do we want to see if there's any questions first before we move on, or do you want me to just go ahead?
I personally think it's important to hear the totality.
Okay, all right.
Because this is a budget for, I believe, for the first time, is the closest to being a district-wide rationale as opposed to separate things here and there. I think there's, you know, more intentionally, anyway.
Okay. Um, so like Susan said, there'll be some repeating here, but as for our budget overall, you know, it's a little lower this year because of the proposal we're making for reducing some personnel in classroom size, classrooms themselves. So I think what the biggest conversation at Ringe Memorial School, and I'm going to share my enrollment document with you, is enrollment at RMS. That's, that's what's really kind of driving the budget conversation for us. So if you look, you can see what we have, this first table is where we're at this year with COVID configurations of classrooms and remote classes. You can see what we have. Underneath in that table below, we had projected for about three hundred and eighty-four students, four hundred with our special education preschool program. However, we ended up with two eighty-three, so we're about a hundred students, we lost a hundred students to homeschool and other schools. And so that, that's a concern for us. So then we have what we're trying to project, which is really hard to do, projecting for next year. We, I think as a district, we're saying, you know, bringing back about fifty percent of the students. I did go a little higher because I do feel that if, if we go back to a non-COVID world, I don't know if we will, we, I think we'll get more than fifty percent. So this is about an increase of about fifty-seven students, but it has a reduction of two classrooms. These are the best projected enrollments numbers as of right now, kind of based on this year and what we think might be for next year. So the class sizes, you know, that might change a little bit, the who, you know, what, how many classrooms per grade level. But so that, the reduction of two classrooms, like Susan said, we would propose that one position would be for a full-time tech position and, and then one staff member to transfer to JGS to support the students and teachers in that building, making the classroom, the student-to-teacher ratio similar in both schools. So, so that was, that's the main conversation Susan touched base on the Zern program and otherwise than that, that's the only real changes we have.
All right, thank you. And so Ruben, when you were saying in totality, I assume you mean you want the full district, not just elementary and then the high school. So moving on to David.
Yeah, so what I'll do is I will actually share, I'm not going to go through the entire PowerPoint of the vision that I shared with the Ed Committee, but I think stopping on some key points will help with, with the visual of our vision for this year and what we proposed. So I'll pop that up. All right. So we really focused in our budget for this year on a couple of things. One of them, or one of them is related to what everyone has sort of been saying, a recognition of the fact that we have learners who are going to be rejoining our school either from remote learning or in all likelihood from, from homeschool environments currently. And even some of the learners who have been in person only receiving access to their teachers on that hybrid schedule twice a week at the middle high school, there's a disruption to learning across the board is basically what I'm getting at. And we, we recognized that in the proposals that we, we put together at the middle high school. And we also know that social emotional needs continue to be a concern for get, basically rebalancing and getting our learners back to hopefully a place of being centered and building back any skills in the social emotional parts of their lives that may have been lost. So we sort of focused on the angle of making sure that we have programming and staffing in place next year that can plug some of those social emotional holes and provide some consistency for our learners, especially at the middle level, and also ensure that the gaps that may appear or will likely appear in learning can be addressed in a meaningful way with the staff in terms of where we've placed them. So that's one avenue that we focused on. The second piece we focused on was really doubling down on the strategic design and that the idea and the strategic design of future planning and supporting learners and their personal pathway to success, which all of our exit outcomes of learners focus around building up that independence. And as Charlie had alluded to, when they leave our school, they may go to college and some of the, we, we hope more of them may choose that path. But for us, when we talk future planning, it isn't just about college. It's about learners who may go into a career path immediately. Millipore is adding two hundred and fifty positions I just read in the newspaper. And I can tell you as the principal of the school that they reach out often to look for avenues to engage with our, our school community and get our learners to sort of look at that, at those sorts of jobs. We have other industry in the community that's, that's great career-based items. We have trades in our community that are huge contributors to the wellbeing of our community and our learners should have access to those things. We have, as we were reminded at the Veterans Day Assembly, huge numbers of our learners who join the military each year, which is a beautiful choice, and we applaud that as well. The point is, we don't know exactly where our learners are going to go when they leave here, but it's our job to help them. And part of the strategic design is about building intentional structures for that. So we focused on social, emotional and academic support coming back from COVID and really building the structures for future planning. And we identified four key areas that are going to be critical to that future planning coming together. So one of the, one of the things that we're talking about in our budget is an adjustment where we've worked with Student Services to really identify a need in our school counseling department where we've been consistently evolving the support that's available on the social, emotional and academic side to learners. In twenty eighteen, and we created the Connect Team, which really built family outreach. In this current school year, we've been working on the vision and common purpose of how we support learners. There's still a disconnect and there's still substantial needs. And so in the future, we want to consolidate those needs. And we worked with Student Services with Jen Horn to identify a shift in resources that can allow this to happen. So again, we're not proposing any increase to make this position of the counseling director become a reality, but it is the priority in our vision. We view this individual, a counseling, counseling services director as an administrative-type position as being essential to bridging all of the social emotional supports that we've been building into one cohesive system. We also view this as critical to the personal learning plan element and helping to be intentional with supporting learners and teachers and crafting and putting that into effect. It's, it's a necessary position for the next stage of our strategic design. And I won't go over all these pieces, but you know, there's three major areas that this individual will be focusing on, all of them related to the, to the priority of supporting learners, social, emotional and academic needs, and helping us with future planning. We're talking about this individual coordinating the counseling roles and improving workflows that the individuals we have can better manage the needs of our learners and supporting our teachers, working on a more intentional system of scheduling and testing. We're talking about this learner ensuring that this, this role, ensuring that the processes are built and followed appropriately, supporting the bigger vision of the district in terms of how our counseling team works and coordinating with our ELO coordinator to make sure that personal learning plans, which we, you know, did this year in a very rough way, and our teachers have expressed a lot of feedback and need, that this individual can help to make that process effective going forward. So we, we're not proposing any, any increase in staffing, but what we've worked out with our Student Services with Jen is that if we are able to get a counseling services director to oversee some of the, the support and take a small load of learners from the counseling department, that would free up our JRMS assist teacher and our social worker who currently are doing a lot of overlapping roles, it would allow them to take more of a caseload and take the burden that, that, that the case manager that we're proposing shifting over would have taken. It allows for the system to work. And that we don't need to still need to look at that. So the other area that we looked at to support learners is JRMS and really thinking about, again, the consistency of social emotional learning, the consistency of plugging gaps and building a foundation for success. So we're looking at some adjustments to JRMS. Again, these are shifts in roles. We are not proposing any additions to JRMS teaching. We're looking at grade six in line with what Susan and Kelly had been talking about, really making grade six an intentional year for building foundations and, and taking the learning that's, that's happening in the two elementary schools and bringing it together into a cohesive foundation for the remaining time that they're in our school district. So we're, we're proposing a shift to make the ELA class in grade six actually two different classes. One of them focused on reading strategies and intentional reading skills where we know that they're learning to read in JRMS, excuse me, in the grade schools. At JRMS, we want that to be transitioning into using the content and building the skills to, to access the reading in their content areas in an intentional way. Again, that's not a new position. It's taking the current ELA role and shifting it into a reading specialist role. We already have a writing workshop program in JRMS. We're proposing shifting that to a grade six writing position for the same reason. Again, bringing two schools together and creating a really intentional foundation for strong writing skills. One of the things that we know is that coming into JRMS, the test scores from both elementary schools are very strong. They're, they're high. They typically are above the state average. Our, our grade schools do a wonderful job in those areas. And we, in my opinion and observation of what, what the data shows, haven't been intentional in consolidating those gains in sixth grade to make sure the foundation continues as time goes on. So that's the adjustment that we're looking at there. Grade seven and eight, what we're proposing, and we don't have to go through all of it, but essentially what we're proposing is that grade seven and eight become a looping sort of experience where the teachers in grade seven and eight retain their learners for two years instead of one year. So rather than having, you know, a different set of teachers in grade seven and a different set in grade eight, a two-year program allows for several things to take place. One of them is the personalization of learning for each learner, both in, you know, in the long term, but especially the short term. With, with the current seventh graders retaining their teachers for a second year, any gaps created from COVID with this group being the group that had a disruption to the end of sixth grade and now a disruption in the middle of seventh, this seventh grade team would be able to continue the instruction and fill those gaps much more seamlessly than having new teachers in eighth grade. There's a huge social emotional benefit in the middle years to having consistency and building a culture that's positive, focused around norms and building out a sense of trust amongst them. So again, looping makes sense in that purpose. But in the longer term, when we talk about personalization of learning and allowing learners to move quicker or slower depending on their personal needs, having the same batch of teachers for two years ensures that that can take place. Now, when you're planning the courses for eighth grade, the same instructor is going to be teaching those learners. They can group and regroup based upon what they've seen throughout the entire seventh grade year and be intentional with the eighth grade placements because of that. So that's the big shift that we're proposing in, in the middle level is more foundations in grade six, looping in grade seven and eight, again, with no increase in staff. World language is an area, again, thinking of the future planning and building a stronger foundation where we're proposing a shift in staff to allow that to take place. JRMS has seen a spike in world language interest. This year, twenty sixteen, seventeen was when we essentially cut the middle school world language program. We started allowing access to the high school and then removed barriers to that access the last two years, and the interest has been through the roof. There's also a lot of research that shows that learning in a world language supports success in the native language of the learner as well. So we're proposing shifting, and I think it's here, shifting some things around to make that happen. The addition of a world language instructor, we're proposing pulling from our current technology instructors because, going back to what Susan and Kelly said, where they're taking more time to focus on the foundations of technology, we are proposing spending more time focusing on the integration of that, and thus we would need one less technology teacher. So it's a shift of a technology teacher to teach world language in the middle level without losing access to the technology instruction that's taken place. This is, I think, the last big thing to discuss in our budget is the shift in technology that I was just alluding to. The grade schools are proposing building more foundational skills at RMS and Jaffrey grade by having those technology teachers, where a lot of the access to technology, digital citizenship, et cetera, would take place. Our Ed Media Center is really focusing on building, and again, intentional supports for learners' technology skills as well as other areas. So that would serve as a bridge. And then at the middle high school, we're proposing an integration of technology through a STEM and eventually STEAM model that will allow them to utilize the skills from their earlier grades in the higher grades. And so we're looking at a proposal, and this is really, this, there's a lot more on this Monday. This is what Monday focuses around with the Ed Committee is the STEAM model, thinking of constructions, trades, trades, et cetera. But we're really looking at an integration of technology at the middle and high school that will allow for them to apply what they've learned at the foundational level and continue to get remedial support through our Ed Media Center if needed. Adding STEM courses, we've got a really great batch that our current STEM instructor has rolled out. We, we believe, based on the research and the focus at the New Hampshire DOE and US Department of Ed, that this is a huge future planning boon, having STEAM as a part of a school's culture and moving our construction trades and arts in that direction as well. We're proposing some budget adjustments to allow STEAM to happen. That's all already included in the budget. We've lowered, cutting in half the supply request for the building trades, which is now becoming construction trades program and recognition of the fact that this is the first year we'll be offering an altered course, which is construction trades. And we don't know which construction trade modules we'll be offering. Construction trades is different from building trades in that they have different modules at a foundational level versus one that they really get really deep into the learning. So we don't know what that's going to look like, and it would be irresponsible to ask for a huge amount of supply purchasing when we don't know what we're going to be asking for. But the other reason that we proposed that cut was in recognition that if we're going to continue to build out a STEM program with more STEM labs, we're likely going to need more supplies and equipment, which we did budget for, again, in shifting those funds from one supply line to the equipment and supplies and the others. Staffing-wise, we've proposed the replacement of the two technology ed positions, like I previously said, and the building trade position, so that's three positions total. We'd be adding two STEM instructors to the one we currently have and then shifting the other position over for the world language piece. And then we're proposing some shifts in Ed Media. This is inaccurate because the actual budget proposes one full-time Ed Media Associate. We currently have a halftime study hall and a halftime Ed Media that we're proposing merging into one full-time Ed Media support and then increases in the supply and books in those areas by decreasing the supplies in books in other areas. So the big highlights of our budget is all about reallocation, you know, reallocating staffing to support the STEAM programming at JRMS and CHS. We really believe that STEAM and getting learners' exposure to the thinking skills that go into STEAM and getting them thinking through that lens of their futures is a beneficial piece of meeting the strategic design and pushing us to the next level of learning and supporting our kids. The reallocation of that technology position to support a universal world language program at the middle school. The current requests from learners reflect that that's a need. Research reflects that that can help in other areas of learning. And again, it fits into our strategic designs, cultural sort of pieces and looking at the bigger picture of the world as part of the instruction that is provided to our learners. We're looking at the revision to grade six core to include reading and writing as standalone foundational disciplines, again, by reallocating existing staff. We're looking at the elimination of a case manager only if we have the counseling director because that allows other positions to fall into place. But again, there's no increase requested in money because we're looking at moving the salary and benefits and things from the case manager and also utilizing the existing extra days that our counselors have and combining those to create the salary and benefits from this position. We are proposing the centralization of a lot of supply and book budgets to improve efficiency and recognition of the fact that we have not always been as diligent about using those funds in a, in a way that supports the whole school. We've removed the general ed supply and book lines from almost all departments and centralized and reduced them to reflect actual spending. So again, to, to sort of pay for and, and offset some of the other things we're asking for and then making some investments in equipment, furniture and library media center and STEM labs using some of the reductions in other areas. So I know that was more than five or 10 minutes, but it was hard to get, it's, it's very interwoven what we're asking to do. This is a year where our staff has been working already incredibly hard, you know, almost across the board, to start thinking of their future. I met with the seventh and eighth grade teams already to talk about the idea of looping, and they were thrilled. They were thrilled at the potential to personalize instruction for their kids. And they were thrilled at the idea of having the, the opportunity to intentionally build that culture. I've met with one of the two our teachers and I'm meeting with the other one on Tuesday to discuss potential STEAM courses and how to use their discipline, both to teach the arts, but also to support learners who may have interest in trades, learning skills like blueprint designs and how to read technical plans and design them and things like that. They were excited, at least the one that I've spoken to, was excited about doing that work. Our two music teachers who are already planning on how they can implement things, again, to support this initiative of thinking of future planning and, and pushing the arts into the career aspects of kids' futures as well. So our staff are ready for this sort of change. So our staff are ready for this sort of change, and they're ready for this sort of growth. But if we end up back at a place of saying, you know, we have to cut back and we have to get our class sizes up, and I know that's not necessarily what was advocated, but we're at a place where we're proposing big changes and our staff seems ready to make those big changes with the support that we're asking to be offered for them to do that. And I guess I'll leave it at that, that this this could be a really big year of growth at the middle high school as long as we support and are intentional in making that happen.
Thanks to all of you for sharing. I think I'm really pleased to see how strategic your thinking was and creative. So I really appreciate that. I don't know if other people have comments at this point?
Marcia, I'm sorry to interrupt, but one thing I forgot to mention was that we, in addressing and being realistic as a staff about our current standardized assessment results, which again, show a downward client decline and then a bounce back up, we're trying to be more intentional as a staff with both the testing that we provide and on what timeframes and how we utilize that data. So in the budget that I put forward, again, with some shifts of areas, we're proposing a regular regiment of testing in the fall and spring for grade six through 11, with six and seven doing map testing in the fall and spring, and then eight, nine, and 10, and 11 doing P S A Ts in the fall and spring, with the exception of juniors who obviously do the S A Ts in the spring. And then intentionally building time to review that data and continue to use it to improve instruction. So we're also taking the feedback that has come the school's way over the years. And as a school leader, I'm trying to be more intentional and making sure that our staff has both the awareness to deal with that information and the support to learn and use that in an intentional way.
All right, thanks. I thought I heard someone else. Charlie.
Yes. I just want to say that having received the full presentation from Susan and Kelly and David, that I was really impressed, and I really think that they've got their act together, and I really think that, you know, we're going to really be moving forward. Like, support everything they're going to do, okay? And from my perspective, what I'm trying to do is figure out a way that we can afford it and still be sensitive to our taxpayers. So that's what I'm trying to do. And I have a suggestion. The first one is that I think that if I go to the individual, sit down with Carrie and Ruben and maybe Laurel, I go to the individual line items. There are line items there that we can reduce a little bit. I don't know how much it will add up to, but we're talking a thousand dollars here, a thousand dollars there, based on historical spend rates and what the budgets are, okay, and the year-to-date spending. And I think we may be able to save some money there. I'm not saying we're going to save hundreds, but I'm saying that we might save some. The other suggestion I have is that we add 150 K to revenue. And the reason I say that is we're proposing a one-half secretary for Medicaid. And Ruben in his slide said, we're going to save at least 150 K, or we're going to get at least 150 K additional revenue by having this person in place. So my suggestion is if we're going to add the expense of putting this person in place, we ought to be able to add the 150 in revenue that a person's going to generate. So those are a couple of suggestions that I have.
Okay, thank you. And Carrie?
Yes, so in the estimated taxes and revenues spreadsheet, there's already 175,000 estimated Medicaid revenue in that.
I didn't see that. I saw the same for 2022 as it was for 2021 in revenue, 875 K.
There's 175 K for Medicaid revenue in the revenue budget for next year.
Is there a 150 addition to last year?
No, so the total estimated is 175,000 in revenue. There was no money budgeted this year for Medicaid revenue at all. And last year, I believe it was modified to only $2,000 when we did the finalized revenues because of the changes in the in the law. So when revenues were finalized in the fall, there was no Medicaid revenue budgeted for this year, and there was very little budgeted for last year.
So what you're saying is that if the half person wasn't approved, you'd still have a revenue of 175 K?
No, I would have taken that out of the revenue budget.
So I think what she's saying is what you're proposing, they've already done.
Yes.
That's what she's saying, yeah. I'm having difficulty with that, but I believe her.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, also Carrie, is Charlie's question is, where was the decrease in revenue in other areas such that the increase of the 175 Medicaid made it very similar to what's been in the past? Or am I missing something?
Right, so in the fall, when revenues are finalized, we don't have exact numbers for certain things, and a lot of times we don't know what our special ed aid is going to be. So I have a conversation with the Department of Revenue, and that typically, there's some minor modifications. Usually, the Medicaid revenue is not modified because historically, we've been able to to keep that number. We may modify it a little bit, but because of the law changes that happened a couple of years ago, we had to drastically change our revenue. But in addition to that, when we have a surplus from the prior year, that gets added in as revenue. So a lot of times, that's offset by the surplus that we've had. So there aren't a lot of changes to the revenue when it's finalized, but typically, the special education aid is modified based on what the state has for current numbers. And then the adequacy aid is known at that point in time, too.
All I'm saying is that when I went through the 2021 budget, okay, we had 875 K in revenue. It doesn't call out the Medicaid as a separate line item, at least not that I could find. So if I was looking at the 875 from year to year, and we're adding 175, what Ruben's question is, what did we drop as far as 175 is concerned?
Charlie, are you looking at the estimated revenues and assessments?
Yes.
Under estimated revenue from federal sources, Medicaid revenue for this year is zero and projected for next year is 175. Then there's two lines, federal grants and disability program, and I think that those are the two that add up to the 875,000 that you see at the top of the sheet. So that, actually, that is a very good point. Carrie, at the top of that sheet, estimated revenues and assessments, Medicaid is not considered other special revenue, only federal grants and disability grants?
That's correct. Medicaid is considered revenue that we receive into the general fund.
Okay, thank you. I would like to echo what Charlie said about the presentations and the thoughtfulness of the personnel shifts. I'm especially excited about the focus on STEM, having seen some pretty impressive young students go through robotics. They're hungry for it.
So.
And I also want to say that I'm not in favor, I'm not in favor of reducing staff. I'm just caught between what the impact will be to the Jeffrey community, which saw a 25% increase in home, average home value. So an increase in the tax rate has a much bigger increase on the average home value family than if there had been no reevaluation. I understand that's beyond the school's control, but an additional, I think it's going to be $840 on top of last year's tax bill to the average family in Jeffrey is going to be very difficult. That's why I am looking for ways, other than staff impacts, to reduce the budget. And Ruben, I understand that decreasing the buyback from the budget, proposed budget, will also decrease the default budget. I guess I don't see the, is the harm in that, that then it will not be in the default budget for next year's budget cycle? I don't think so.
I don't think that's the case. I wasn't actually expressing it as a problem from the standpoint of decreasing the default budget. Carrie, you might, if there are some issues, Carrie, if you want to bring up some items that you have concerns, if you do, if you do have concerns about that. I just know, because we've entered in the last few years of trend budgeting in the areas of, you know, kind of overall spending with the, in the areas of special education and in staffing, where we've taken out, you know, sums of money in the tunes of hundreds of thousands of dollars in those areas, and I'm proposing that again, you know, similar to the idea of, you know, in special education and in the general fund, that there's some overlap with those overages. So we got to be careful about that. I'm just cautioning that, because I'd, in the end, you know, we'd all want to make sure, I'm happy with surpluses. They're good. The, I'm not happy, I'm not interested in going back and saying, well, we just really blew it. And so when I look at trend budgeting, I just have to at least give the information that part of the trend of why we've had some of these increases, because we've also had a trend in pre-spending in those areas. And so if you do that, but then take that out of the budget, you then eliminate that entire $230,000 quote unquote buffer. Now, we have a buffer, we've talked about it, as long as we're doing things ethically and so forth in the area of student services of 400,000, you know, I think we probably should have a warrant to, if we do have, you know, a surplus, to put some more money in that area as we continue to get tighter. But, you know, we just have to think about that. I just don't want to ignore that. Yes, see, the, in education, little institution, we know, doesn't change things at the same rate as other, you know, organizations, businesses, they don't. It doesn't operate the same. We got a lot of moving parts, got a lot of personalities. Our budgets are, and the items that take, kind of, what is vulnerable is what happens out in society. So when society has big shifts and changes, and I'm guessing that we just don't know what those shifts and big changes due to COVID is going to end up being. You know, I'm not worst-case budgeting. I think that that's not the case, but I'm also not best scenario budgeting here and wanting to make sure. I think it's healthier to be in that kind of middle zone. And if we give money back, we give money back to reduce, you know, taxes. I don't know, Carrie, if you have any thoughts on this specific issue? Because it is, I mean, Laurel is right to bring up this issue of 200 some odd thousand dollars, because it's an area, and she's right, it's not a direct impact to, it's, it's, it might not be a direct impact, is I guess the question, is the statement to specific personnel. Because, once again, we're dealing with averages, and it can tip into a spot that would make us have a problem. So I don't know, Carrie, do you have anything to add?
Basically, what I wanted to add was when you're looking at the default budget and, you know, when we're preparing the proposed budget, we're also backing out the prior year retiree buybacks that were budgeted. So when we back that out and then we add in what we estimate the buybacks to be, it's a, it's a net gain to the budget of $7,943.
Can you say that slower?
Sorry, okay. So when we're preparing the budgets, we're also removing any buybacks that we had budgeted for the current year. When we do that, when we remove the buybacks that we budgeted and then add back in the ones that we expect to pay out, it's a net gain to the budget of $7,943 for next year. That's the difference. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand. So the impact of that, when I'm talking, when we sat down and said, hey, let's, we can take the 300, you know, trend-wise, we can take 300,000 plus out of student services to get to that 7 million spot, knowing that some of that's out of staffing overages, and then say, all right, well, we know that there's a $200,000, you know, similarity between the two areas, we're taking money out of, so we could probably take 100 and a quarter, 125,000 out of that. Where does that, because what we're talking about is all, you know, staff costs, you know, like, you call it, you know, employment. So where does that leave us? What do you think that leaves us? Are we vulnerable? Are we not vulnerable?
You're asking me?
Yes.
Well, we could be. It depends. When we make the salary reductions, when we have random amounts, I try and look at where we've had typical overages, and a lot of that does come from student services, and it's generally due to turnover or, well, it's turnover in a lot of instances and rehiring. So if we rehire well and we can save money there, we save money. In addition, if we have turnover and we're unable to fill those positions right away, we have positions that have been budgeted for the full year that may not work the full year. So we usually end up having savings in that area. So if you, so if you take away the, the buybacks and we don't have those positive shifts in savings, then we could end up in a difficult situation. I hope that made sense.
But we do have 437 K for the side for that, right? Difficult circumstances?
Well, you're talking about what the board voted to retain this year for emergency purposes. That has to be approved by the state for what we use that money for. There are specific reasons for being able to use that money. I don't know.
It's not usually in the area of staffing.
Can I say something about the statements you made of you're okay with surpluses? Question, the default budget is based on the prior year budget, correct? Okay, so if the prior year budget has a surplus, it's overinflated, is it not?
I couldn't hear that last part.
Overinflated, I think you said.
Overinflated.
Overinflated?
If you, if you have a budget that is a million dollars over what you actually spent, okay, that budget is carried forward as a default budget. All right, so now you have a default budget that's a million dollars higher than what you needed to achieve the work that you were going to do within that budget. You following me? You following me?
Oh, I, I
What you're saying is you need, let's say you say you need $2 million to run the district, but it actually turns out you only need a million and a half. All right, the following year, the default budget is based on $2 million. It's not based on a million and a half. All right, so your default budget continually goes up. So that's the problem with a surplus is it creates a funny default budget. And you try to get under that budget and say, yeah, look, we did good, we got under the default, but the default was inflated to start with. The second thing with the, with the surplus is when you have a surplus, what you've done is you've taken that money from the taxpayers, you've had it available, you haven't paid them interest, then at the end of the year, you say, we don't need that anymore. But oh, by the way, there are a couple of things we're going to do. All right, we're going to spend down the surplus, we're going to look at things we need that didn't budget for, we're going to try and spend that. And the other thing we're going to do is we're going to put warrant articles on there and tell taxpayers it doesn't cost them anything because there's a surplus to pay for it. Okay, and a lot of taxpayers believe that. They believe it doesn't cost them anything. Instead of what, instead of knowing that, yeah, instead of that money going back into your pocket, it's going to go into whatever the warrant article is. So I think it's a little bit misleading when we start talking about surpluses. I think surpluses are good too, because you don't have to worry about overspending. You don't have to worry about meeting the budget because you know damn well, you're never going to spend it in the first place. So that's a good thing about it. The bad thing about it is it, it's, it's a, it's a bad practice from a taxpayer perspective. That's just my two cents.
Heidi, a while ago, you had your hand up and the conversation went on, but I didn't want to ignore that.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to thank everyone for presenting Kelly and Susan and David and I know you're all working really hard and I just appreciate that you're giving us a picture of really K through 12 and the vision for our schools working really as one. And I also wanted to say I, I'm excited about the thought of the looping in seventh and eighth grade because I know it comes up or it's come up in public meetings in the past when teachers have spoken and talked about how, you know, we all, we all know there's the summer slide and just that that first five weeks of school is really trying to make up that ground. But I also think a big piece of that is just learning your new students. And so I think that this is exciting to think about having the looping in seven and eighth and what the possibilities are for that. And I guess, yeah, so I just want to thank you all and really all of you on this call because I know you're all working really hard and I think this has been a difficult time in everyone's lives and we've I felt very vulnerable to sort of just how difficult everything is right now. And I know you're all working hard and I just want to tell you that I appreciate it. So that, and also I'm a little bit concerned because I know there's been, getting back to Kelly, we're sort of, you're projecting that maybe 50% of the students will come back to RMS. And I, I find it interesting because I think, you know, we have sort of this, out there in public, these comments that everyone wants to be back in school. And I'm just curious if, I think it's going to be closer to more all of those students you've lost wanting to come back. I, I could be wrong, but what do we do if that happens? Question.
Okay, so
This would be nice.
So that, that's actually, you know, you, you stated it, you know, again, I'm not trying to be worst case scenario. The reason for not taking the retiree buyback out also provides the ability to make some adjustments should we have 100% of our kids or more coming back. You know, David mentioned that Millipore is adding, you know, hundreds of jobs and so forth. I don't know what that means. Maybe they're not from in, you know, in town, or maybe that means that people are going to be moving. I have no idea what that means. You know, we have, we, you know, didn't factor that into anything that we talked about, but it's those things that go on in our minds. And so it's why, it's why this is a good conversation, you know, in the end, you know, what I would hope that we would do is if the decision that is to reduce the initial budget, draft one by a million, what I would like, like it to be is, you know, everyone agreeing on, on that, first and foremost, I think it's important for the well, I mean, everyone, that would be great, or, or, you know, at least the majority of the board, I mean, the, what, either, either or. But to charge the administration with finding out the best case scenario, I don't think any of them are fantastic case scenarios, but any, any best case scenario. My desire would be with a caveat that it does not directly impact the educational movement that we're trying to make. I think, you know, we've, we've had a lot of suggestions here as to what can be cut and, and if the, if the consensus of the board is that we need to go further, another 250 to 280,000 or so from what we've discussed, you know, that's the board's right to do so. Just, we, I would want to meet with, as, as you've just heard, a conversation with the elementary principals and the high school principal, we're really trying to, and, and it's also happening at the SAU right now. And we've, we've spent five years getting the right things and the right in, in order to move forward and take a leap. And your, next Monday, you're going to find that we're starting to be ready and we're clearly ready to take leaps, not interested in stopping that process. So the, what I'd want to do is, I'd want to work with the entire administration to solve the problem so that we guarantee that we don't miss something. Because I could even do it. I mean, I, I can go through and I'll say, oh, let's take this line, this line, this line, and unintentionally mess up. And I don't want to do that. So that's just some thoughts as we continue to go forward.
Thanks. Kelly?
Yes, I, I'll just give you my two cents, Ruben. I don't think that there's 285 in a line. Okay, I've been through them and I'd be looking at something in a neighborhood of 134. I don't think you're going to get no 285 others going through the line item. That's just my opinion.
Kelly?
Thank you. So I just wanted to go back to Heidi's question of, just to break down the numbers a little bit more. So approximately the 99-ish, 100 students that we lost, about 65 are homeschooling and about 34-ish are transferred to other schools. So that was kind of taken into consideration that those students that went to other schools might just stay with those schools if they created new relationships and friends there. So that was part of the reasoning.
I'd like to
Laurel. John, go ahead, then Laurel.
Okay, thank you. I, I would like to come back a little bit to what Charlie said, not just this last moment, but prior to that. When he talked about the default budget and surpluses. And appreciate a little bit of a discussion from Carrie and Ruben on that issue. I know it's been out there. I, I think we I, I think the state in its wisdom tries to protect school districts from imprudent decisions by school boards and communities who are feeling the pinch of budgets. And I, I think the default budget is one of the tools that, that they use. If I understand what Charlie was saying, then having a surplus in the budget, even if it's for special education, does result in that default budget being higher. And to the extent that we correct that, we also make ourselves potentially a little more vulnerable, I suppose. But, but I don't completely understand the relationship between the default budget and the surpluses. Also, having that surplus not only protects us in the case of student services, but it also allows us some flexibility to pre-fund certain things that we know we're going to need. As Charlie though, has pointed out, there's a negative to that too because the taxpayer pays for it in advantage, sorry, in advance. So I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little bit torn and I'm wondering if Carrie and Ruben can talk at all to that issue because it is kind of central to how we budget.
So Carrie, I'll let you talk about the default budget and how it's built and all that kind of thing. What I will say is that, because I do know what's happening behind the scenes. And how are you, how are you getting feedback? Is there something going on?
We can just have people focus on, on you and yourself when you're not speaking, the more people you have on theoretically, the more potential there is for things like feedback issues. So I try to just keep it solely if you're speaking.
So, you know, some of the reasons, I mean, you can go, you can go back, let's, let's go back before I was here. All right, so yeah. You know, Charlie, when I first got here, I'll be, I'll make this short. When I first got here, Charlie had, and I had, had a conversation, I think there may have been another board member as well at one point in time or and we talked about the concerns about budget inflation and so forth. And so we look back in history and we certainly found that there were behaviors of budgeting and certainly I would probably say that, that similar overages would, you know, similar surpluses would have occurred. But there were times of people spending lines down in order to not lose money, right? So it's, it's interesting that we would have that conversation because we're talking about not spending money, so you end up losing it. But, so in a way, the, the thinking was correct. Doing so, we created a lot of, you know, waste, you know, we have, you know, we, we all know, none of us are saying that we haven't had excess supplies. We know from cleaning out certain aspects of things, you know, books that were purchased and so forth and, and thankfully in some areas, we're now starting to utilize those that were purchased, you know, so long ago and others have gone by the wayside. And it's been unfortunate because those lines were continued on and so forth. So we've done a lot to take away much of that, at least first, the first thing we did, and we had a massive surplus that year, was to not allow, from the SAU standpoint, to spend things down. And to find out kind of where we are. And it's been taking a few years to get those trends where I think we're able to, I'm comfortable anyway, with promoting trend budgeting in the area of staffing and so forth. Simultaneously, we work overtime, every single one of these individuals who's here to find the best pricing constantly, because, because a budget is a guesstimate. And so we have practices that we try to use and sometimes we, we do well, sometimes we, you know, wish we did better. Anytime there's opportunities that are from the state like this year, that with this COVID, of getting another 100,000, you know, we're finding that money and, and trying to do everything we possibly can to get that in there. That just adds to our surpluses. And that's a good thing. So a lot of these, a lot of things that have happened surplus wise over the years have, has been a result of saying, you know, no, in certain areas. As Carrie stated before, not hiring positions if we couldn't find the right individual, you know, we don't always want to, it's not always best to fill that spot if, if it's going to hurt us actually, and keep on trying to move forward. So, you know, some of the surplus that we have is not just, it's, it's, it's not bad budgeting. It's, once the budget's there, let's, let's do everything we possibly can to continue to support, you know, good practices and not be flagrant, I guess you could say, with our spending. So I'll let Carrie, you know, talk about, hopefully I was given enough time also to Carrie to prepare for the default conversation.
Right, so the default is the prior year's budget plus or minus anything that's required by law, so statutory or contractual, so any collective bargaining agreements that were already pre-approved by the voters. So any increases in that regard, and then you take out one-time expenditures. So when I looked at the budget for next year for the default, I'm taking the current year's budget and let me just go up here. $153,921 was taken out for one-time equipment purchases, bond interest that went down, furnitures and fixtures or, and anything else that was really a one-time expense. So that was the total amount that was taken out. But then I had to add in the statutory requirement of New Hampshire retirement increases that go into effect on July 1st. That equated to $409,933. And then I look at the JRSSA and the JREA CBA, since they're union agreements, the voters already approved for those increases, those increases combined equals $419,545. So that's another increase to the budget. And then I back out, as I said earlier, the retiree buybacks that we budgeted and then add in the ones that we're expecting to pay because in the JREA collective bargaining agreement and JRSSA, they're, they're allowed to have those buybacks. So I take out the ones that were budgeted for this year and I add in the ones for next year. And as I said, that nets to an increase to the default budget of $7,943. And then we had health insurance increase of 2.5%. The impact to the default budget is only for the JREA and the JRSSA CBAs because within those, those benefits are included and the contracts go into next year. So that impacts the default budget only, but then the operating budget, the impact of the health insurance 2.5% increase is added for everybody else in the regular budget. And then any teacher lane changes, because that's in their contract, those get added to the default budget. For estimated lane changes for next year, we're looking at a $19,154 increase. And then for any student services for, because it's required by law, if you're looking at specific needs that we have to implement in staffing, we're looking at an increase to the instructional associates and student services of a 1.31 total FTE, which equals 7, $73,479 in salaries and benefits. So I hope that helped answer how the default budget is determined.
So, so Carrie, can you make it really simple? All right, this, the default budget for this year is based on last year's budget, correct?
Yes, it starts that way, but then it's plus or minus
I know the goings on and it goes off is, but basically the number you start with is last year's budget.
Well, it's the prior year's budget, so we're looking at what the budget is for this year.
Okay, so prior year's budget, it does not make any difference how much was spent in the prior year, is that correct?
Well, because you don't know your expenditures yet. So we're looking at what is budgeted for this year. We don't know what this year's expenditures are going to equal.
But it doesn't make any difference, does it?
Well, it can't because we haven't completed the year yet.
That's, yeah, that's exactly right. It can't. Okay, so the, what the default is based on is it's based on the prior year budget. It has no relationship whatsoever to prior year spending. Is that correct?
Yes.
Because you don't know, because you don't know, but it, it is a fact it is. So, so for people who are trying to understand, to use the default budget as a target by saying, hey, we're coming in under default, really doesn't mean anything except the fact that you're coming in under a prior year budget.
Yes, you're coming in on our prior year budget, but you're, if you're also looking at expenditures and if you're comparing that to where we ended up in fiscal year 2020, with the coronavirus, I just want to remind everybody that we had huge savings because of transportation, sub-costs that weren't spent, lot of athletics that were canceled, that alone was, was about $500,000. So that doesn't count for anything else that got canceled or any other expenditures. So that doesn't count for anything else that got canceled or any other expenditures that we didn't have. So I just want to make sure everybody's considering that if they're comparing it to last year.
Yeah, yeah, but just, just to clarify Charlie's question or his, actually his statement. The default budget is not based on prior year's actuals. It's based on prior year's.
Budget.
So if we had a million dollar surplus in the prior year, that somewhat inflates the default budget. That's, I think that's Charlie's point and.
And I think Carrie's point is we have the, maybe a bigger surplus than we would because COVID has allowed for less spending in certain areas. I think that's what I'm understanding. So the surplus, even though it is actually a million, if it would have been a normal year, only been about half a million. Is that right? Roughly?
I'm looking at a, a surplus of one point six right now.
Okay, so it's the one point six, sorry.
But, but the Carrie's point, um, is that there are, you know, there are factors that have taken into place. So it's not, it's not a hundred percent what Charlie is saying. The concept of what Charlie's saying is a hundred percent correct, but the numbers themselves aren't always so black and white. Which is why we have this conversation and we keep on working this out because, uh, this is not a black and white type of organization. Completely.
Can we go back to Ruben and, and Charlie? You know, you both had said some, had some suggestions there that Ruben's saying, you know, if you say we are, we want more cut, that you please let the administration do this so that we can impact the least in terms of educational programming. And Charlie said, um, when I look through this, I don't think you're going to get that much more out of it. I think you're going to get this. Right? Laurel, I saw you had your hand up. I don't know if you have something to add to this right now. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. It's not budget related, it's revenue related. Excuse me. Uh, well, actually I have two things. We are anticipating some forestry work next year, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And there is some revenue associated with that, that I do not think appears on our estimated revenues and assessment sheet. And if I understand correctly, if we don't estimate for our, our budget for revenue, if we get revenue, we, under normal circumstances, we can't spend it.
It would come in as unanticipated revenue.
Right. So I would suggest that we budget for it. And I think it's something like thirty-seven thousand dollars.
That's correct. It was about thirty-seven thousand dollars and I sent it to everybody on the board yesterday and just wanted to make sure everybody understood that it is subject to market fluctuations. So it may not come in at that amount.
That's true of all of our revenue estimates, right?
Not all of them. Some are estimates based on what the state provides, but others, others are known in advance.
Okay. And then, uh, earlier on, I had proposed reducing student services another hundred thousand, relying on our trust fund that we have set up. Uh, and if that's not palatable, to reduce it a hundred thousand and then propose a warrant article to increase that fund a hundred thousand dollars to be funded through surplus. And then lastly, I would just like to, um, share a graph of the general fund budget since 2015, if I could share a screen, please?
Yeah, that's something that you go down to yourself. You just click, uh, share screen and it should be.
Okay, thank you. Of course, now I have to find the right screen.
Okay, excuse me. So I know Roberta has her hand up. Do you have it? Are you ready to go or do you want to?
I have to close some, I have to close some windows so I can find it.
All right. So why don't we take, let Roberta speak while she's looking for the windows that she needs to share?
Right, you should.
Okay.
We did the same thing, save that.
Yeah, from, um, what, uh, DRA has told us, this for Carrie, that insurance increases are not to be put in the default. You know, I thought, always thought they were, um, because, uh, you know, it's part of our employee package, but we were told that you can't put them in. And, and that's quite a bit, an increase on the default. The comment Ruben made about, uh, well, Laurel, I'd ask about if you don't put the revenue in from, uh, timber harvest, which you are anticipating, no, it is not an anticipated revenue and you can't spend it as such. Because you are planning on it. So, um, you're, you're planning on getting revenue from that. I also have a question for Carrie, um, and I was, I thought that I could text or chat with her directly. I've been looking at the apportionment between the two towns and, uh, and our MS ones. And I don't know where the numbers come from for doing the, um, the split on the fifty percent from property values. I just, I can't, I can only get one number that's in the chart that, uh, was with the budget stuff. And, you know, it's so, I'm going, the numbers are way high from our MS ones. Then if that's true, Ring is been paying too much of the budget. So can you tell me what year we're going to be using? What, what year MS one value did we use for apportioning the budget? For the twenty nineteen, twenty or twenty twenty-one? I'm mystified because I have all the MS ones and the numbers do not match. Thank you. Oh, and by the way, I, you know, the presentations were really good. Um, I, I agree with, um, you know, the whole concept, um, you know, with the, the seventh and eighth grade plus what the, uh, RMS and JGS are suggesting on the technology. Thank you.
Thanks, Roberta. All right, Laurel, do you have?
Sorry. Operator error. I need a technology teacher.
If it's something that you have readily accessible via email or something like that.
Finally, finally, closed enough windows. Okay. So this, Charlie put up a general fund budget graph earlier. It looked a little different. Because in 2018, we had a pretty large expenditure around the energy project, which I backed out because that was unusual. So I backed it out of the budget and I backed it out of the actual in this graph. The blue line represents budget, the red line represents actual. And then the forecast for 2021 actual, it's based on eighty-five percent of what we're projecting for surplus. Maybe that's not enough of a reduction of the one point six million. But, um, we also have what, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in our actuals so far that you're, we're going to be reimbursed through grants, right? Regardless. But I just, I wanted to also say that this overall trend in budget, that, that in the increase in our slope is something we're going to have to work on to address going forward somehow. Especially knowing that that the endpoint for 2020, for our proposed 2022, doesn't include any special warrants. Whereas the budgets, the budget numbers for the previous years do include dollars from special warrants. And so I just, I just wanted to share this with the board and the administration because it's a, it's a, it's, it's a worrisome increase in slope and therefore cost to taxpayers. And then, uh, I'm going to stop sharing. I had a couple of questions regarding some movement in the proposed budget from what we've been, what we've done in the past. And perhaps this will be addressed at the education committee meeting, in which case, please just say that. We are proposing a new program that's called alternative high school. And I would very much, uh, I think I need to understand that.
Did you want me to answer that as you go Laurel or wait till you're finished?
Um, well, if, if it's going to be covered Monday, that would be fine.
I don't think it would be covered Monday.
It would not, okay.
So that's actually not a new proposal for a program. We have currently, uh, a compass program at the high school and two assist programs at the middle school. The compass program is essentially an alternative educational program for some learners. You know, the distinction being if there's learners who have, um, social emotional needs that are causing them to not be able to access a regular education setting, they have been placed into classes in this compass program historically. That's been maybe over the last five or six years. So when we were looking at the assist and compass programs with Carrie and Jen, the, the compass program already fits the mold essentially of alternative high school programs. So we're attempting to align and show where that money is actually being used versus having it in places where it may not be. So there wasn't, there's nothing new about that, but it was shifting some things that are already happening into areas of the budget where they most appropriately fit. And there were a few other staff positions that had been split, for example, fifty fifty in the middle high school, but we're still being reflected a hundred percent in one or the other. So some of the, we did a lot of that sort of, um, ironing those out when we were preparing the budget for this year. And we are planning on being more intentional going forward with that compass program. You know, um, Jen and, and Dave Fraser are, are working with myself and the administration in the middle high school and the teachers in those programs to better identify, um, the criteria for learners who would need access to one of those sort of, um, learning spaces versus a traditional classroom, et cetera. So there will be some more intentional focus on that in future years, but it wasn't something we were really spending time on in terms of programming for this coming year.
Is, is the intent of this to give the learners the tools to get back into?
In many cases, yes. Like we have some learners who are taking compass. For example, there's a learner who has currently a, a middle level learner who has high anxiety challenges with math to the point that one time this year, that learner was found in the back of the locker room, working on his math because he couldn't, he couldn't socially hand, handle the environment of, of a math class. It was so overwhelming to him and he had other anxiety challenges that were getting in the way of that. So for math, that learner may take compass programs and build some of those skills through the personalization of learning in that environment and then re-access regular ed, you know, regular placement classrooms down the road. For some learners, this may be the pathway to get them through high school and continue to build them with the skill sets they need. We've had learners leaving the compass program already who go in and have really successful careers. They go to community college in some cases, et cetera. But this is much more intentional and smaller scale, um, programming designed to bolster that social emotional skill set for learners while still allowing them to access their learning.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Jen?
I just wanted, I didn't do a presentation. I have one if you want to hear it. It's pretty simple and aligns with whatever people, anybody else says. But one of the things that Laurel is suggesting, and I think that this comes up regularly because I, student services is a large part of the budget and we do tend to consistently give back a surplus. The first thing I would say is that we've looked at that already and we've taken a lot of that surplus already out of our budget. And secondarily, and Carrie would have to answer some of this as well. There's a very fine line between how much we can take out of our budget and still get the IDEA funds that we get. So right now we get between three hundred and fifty and four hundred thousand dollars a year through grants that pay for a lot, for some of our staff and the, I mean, that's a huge percentage of additional support that we get. And when we get, if we keep cutting, then we also lose some of our, our support in that and it becomes very counterproductive to cut that out of our budget. And, and I think that Carrie could talk about that, but we're really, I believe that we're really close to that ratio now and that means I'm all for, I'm a taxpayer here too. And I'm all for making sure, and I have students in the school here. I'm all for making sure that we do the best that we can, but we, there's unintended consequences for cutting in certain.
Thanks, Jen. So are we at a place where we can charge Ruben and the administrators with, you know, maybe it's not going to be quite that million, but maybe a, a amount and say, you know, do what you can?
So, um, I just had a, had a thought. I think one of the things we're going to discuss under warrant articles is a return of two hundred K to taxpayers. So if we take two hundred of that two eighty-five, then all we have to do is find eighty-five in the line item. And that's the, that's a million. I think.
Ruben?
So the two hundred thousand dollars, I believe, Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, is the two hundred thousand dollars that is set aside for land purchase or property purchase?
Correct.
And we did have a discussion about that within finance to talk about, I had actually forgotten about it. About the fact that really, when we look right now, there's, there's nothing in particular that we're, um, likely to be able to get or be interested in getting.
Yeah, we're sitting on a two hundred K. So if we give that back, that leaves us eighty-five K to find in the line items and we still got a million now. So that's just a thought.
So again, are we ready to maybe make a motion and charge them with cutting a bit more and then letting them do? John?
The, the, the idea that Charlie just proposed and Ruben described further sounds alluring because it would be nice to be able to get our budget down and that sounds like a painless way, but, uh, you know, I get concerned a little bit. There are a couple of properties that I, I guess they're not on the market now, but that would be certainly nice to, uh, to have if, if they were to go on the market. I, I think of that little home that's right next to our parking lots at the middle school, high school, sort of surrounded by our property. I realize it's not on the market now, but is this really a painless or a wise way to, you know, to solve the problem? I mean, it sounds good, but. I mean, it sounds good, but, but, you know, I just want to make sure it's the right direction.
How many years are left on that article? It had, it had a time limit.
Yeah, give me, give me a minute to look that up, and I'll let you know. I believe it was five years, but I'll look it up and get right back to you.
So again, I'm wondering if it's time to let Ruben and the administrators do what they do.
See, this Patty, I'm in favor of moving forward. I think I too appreciated the presentations. I would have loved to hear from John, Leclair, and Heather and, and others just to get a sense of, I mean, I've looked at the numbers, but sometimes, you know, there's an extra shovel that we don't need. I'm just kidding. But sincerely, if a little pit can go, a little bit can go a long way if we all kind of pull it together. So I agree that tightening up, I do appreciate the plan, the educational plan from each of the schools especially. I, I feel like a little bit more time on this within the committee would be great. And I also am a little leery of a lot of the opportunities that afforded us this year in terms of like the food insecurity pieces that we've had funding for and where that's going to go, and the people in signing up and being qualified for that in the future. That, we haven't talked about that. I don't know what kind of ramifications that has. I don't want, I'm not throwing that red herring in right now. I'm just saying, I know that people need to sign up for these things, and it does affect us. I also, I like what you're saying about the property fund and, and looking at that a little bit more strategically. I would, I would ask that you do a sweep of all of them and look carefully. I also agree with utilizing the, the fund for student services, although I don't agree with cutting 100,000 just off the top. I think this is going to be a scalpel deal and with each area, if possible. I'm also concerned about Kelly, and I'm, I would love to have those kids back. And I'm also concerned for the folks from Ren saying, and this is not a dig in any way, I just know it will happen. It would happen in any community. If we don't have that many kids in the school system, how can we be paying so much if there's less kids getting the benefit? And this is what, we're a collective community. We all are raising all our kids all the time. It's a village. So, you know, I'm sensitive to some attitudes around funding with lesser kids in the school district. So I don't know how, I just, I don't know. It's, I don't know. So I would like just to move forward and come back to us with another round of this, if possible. Not this, not through three hours, but like another budget of some kind. Because we're down, we are at three hours right now.
Right. Yes. Ruben?
So it would be helpful if we had a number rather than a, which I think was Charlie's point in making that suggestion. And before we do that, however, John had a great question. And Carrie, or maybe it was, well, John did, and then Laurel asked about the timeframe and stuff like that. And so Carrie wanted to answer.
So the, the property warrant article will lapse effective June 30th, 2025, if it is not spent by that time?
Okay. Three years. Okay. So a number would be helpful?
So the million was what was stated at the beginning. The number that I've heard from members of the facilities committee, it has not changed during this timeframe. You know, you've heard a lot of the conversations from, and input from the administration as well. And, you know, and then also the suggestions of the 200,000 here and so forth. So if, I'll give, so I'm giving you an example. So if, for instance, the $200,000 was something that was palatable for the school board members, and I, you know, I think that would probably be its own motion to determine whether that's something that they want to do, you want to do or decision. Then I think the number that we're talking about is 800,000, which is the 716 or so, or whatever, along with whatever Charlie stated more 80 some, I don't know, 82 or 84,000 or something like that. But, but the point being that 800 from the original draft one would be the easiest. And if we come in like $800,000, $800,002 or something like that, that would be fine. It doesn't, you know, so at least, at least 800,000 or something like that.
Right.
Or the board says a million. And we can consider the 200,000 on top of that. Or, or say, leave it where it is, you know, all those things. But just, you know, a number would be helpful for us to be able to look at everything.
I would make a motion that we ask the superintendent and his team to look at the budget. Again, I'm talking about starting from the original proposed budget of $26,72,784. And reducing that by $800,000. With the understanding that the board is going to have a warrant article to reduce the land purchase fund to zero.
All right, so we have a motion.
Okay.
Charlie seconds it. And John, discussion?
Yeah, I would appreciate if Laurel would give us those numbers again. I didn't quite catch that. What is the ultimate goal that you're suggesting we go for?
800.
That we, from the starting point of $26,72,784, we request that the superintendent reduce, and his team reduce that by $800,000. So that would be $25,272,784.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have a discussion?
Yeah, in terms of discussion, I'm not, well, to me, the question about whether that is a, whether the idea of using that $200,000 warrant article is the right way to get there is something I'd like to see the administration decide. So at least, I still have my doubts about that, I guess.
Okay.
That would be my discussion.
Okay, Alicia?
Yeah, I tend to agree with John on this. I am concerned, including that 200,000. We still have realistically five years until that needs to be dealt with. And we don't know what properties could come on the market within that timeframe, so.
All right, thank you. Heidi?
I would just reiterate that. I want to make sure I fully understand that, especially, I think that property, I've been meaning to ask multiple times about the, the house that is sitting next to our middle school. And yeah, it concerns me that if that were to come on the market in the next few years, are we going to be stuck not being able to do it?
It just changed hands, and it didn't get it.
Okay, I, well, that's, I've seen the real estate signs sitting there, and that's what I've been meaning to ask, and it hasn't been, you know, it just hasn't come up, and I thought, oh. Okay, so it did, did we try to get, did we?
I don't know.
Okay.
And then there's a property over at JGS. And that was on the market, someone bought it. I think we have made offers, but they were rejected.
That's correct.
So, so I don't know if anyone has any more information on that, but.
I guess I just, I just, that concerns me. I mean, if face value, it sounds like a good plan to get to the number we want, but are we, are we going to regret that?
And I will share something that I hear from one constituent in particular. If you don't have a plan in place for how you will use property that you want to acquire, how can you justify to the taxpayers that you're taking something off their tax rolls? And so we often say, it would be nice to have, but we really don't have a vision of what we would do with it if we got it, right?
Is there a vision right now for either of those properties? If we could, could have that, is there a definite idea of what we could do?
We've had a lot of conversation about JGS. So that could be increased for their playground area. And maybe even, I don't know, Susan probably has more of a concept of that. That was the easiest one to envision. Certainly, the middle high school area, it's a, you know, more of increasing parking and things of that nature. And, and, but no real solid plan.
Susan, did you want to add?
Just the traffic flow is the other piece. Well, the proposal that didn't pass, I can't remember which spring, I don't think included that property because we didn't own it. But having that property in addition to the playground would also give us a little more flexibility and traffic flow potential.
So loose plans. Okay, so more discussion. Patty, did you just raise your hand?
My only concern is that, will it ever be enough? You know what I mean? I'm not being disrespectful in any way. But back to the very original point of this is that the property value situation and the assessment values are, it's a perennial thing. It's either low, too, high, too. It's just, again, we're absorbing the impacts of the community on the backs of our educational system. It's not a beautiful, perfect system. Something's got to give in that respect. So I just really, I'm not, I'm not even sure. I get back to, I don't know what, is it going to be 10 cents? Is it going to be 50 cents per thousand that we're going to save by cutting the million? I don't know the answer. And I really think we have to know that the next meeting that we have on this, please.
Okay, any other discussion? We've had a motion, we had it second, some discussion. If not, then I think we're ready to vote. All right, not seeing any hands, so roll call vote. Oh, John?
Can I just, can we just have the motion restated, please?
Sure. Laurel, I believe it was 800?
It was to ask the superintendent and his team to reduce the originally proposed budget for fiscal year '22 by $800,000. With the understanding that we would have an additional warrant article to reduce the building, I'm sorry, the acquisition of land fund to zero.
Okay.
And so the process would be to vote on that after, since you've had discussions and so forth. If it passes, fine. If it doesn't pass, someone can offer another one. Or maybe there's even an amendment to that one, but just.
Could I add one thing for discussion?
Yep.
Okay. Our current bond is done for the, the school building for fiscal year '23 or '24, Carrie?
Our final payment for, for that bond will be next fiscal year.
Just a fiscal year '22?
Yes.
And that is $670,000?
$615,000 is the principal. There's very little interest next year.
We can't prepay that, huh?
Well, no, we have building aid tied to that as well. So even if you prepay it, you're only prepaying the cash. You're not prepaying when it hits the books.
Okay. So I'm just, I guess I would say that it would be easier, if you will, next year for those folks of you that will be working on the budget. That's all.
Yeah, Heidi?
So I just want to make sure I'm fully understanding this. If we, if we choose to zero out that fund this year, we could certainly look at where we are next year and propose to contribute to it. So, so I guess I just need a bit more of an explanation. That was going to expire, Carrie, you said, in 2025? So the fact that if we zero it out now, is it just over? Or do we, I'm extremely ignorant when it comes to understanding this. Or do we have to create a whole new warrant article? So it would just be done? If we zero it out, that's, that's done, and then we could? I don't know. It, it feels like a risky move to me, and yet, maybe it's a risk we need to take this year. But then next year, we say, maybe.
Is it a penny wise, pound foolish?
Yeah, so, I don't know. Just want to make sure I'm understanding what the future would look like if we wanted to put ourselves in a, in a strategic position again in the future to acquire.
And with that question, Carrie, if you could talk about what the board is available to do without that fund? For instance, if we were to budget something in the area, our, our budget for, like, let's say a dollar or whatever like that for a land, I don't know. I don't know if we have a line even in the budget for that, but does.
The voters are the only ones that can improve land purchases, so it would have to be a warrant article.
It would have to be separate, good.
Yeah, and I'd want to check with legal counsel too, to see whether or not we actually had to have a warrant article to return it, or whether it was a, a board motion. I'm not sure if we return it early, what the process would have to be legally.
And so I guess I'm wondering, do we amend this motion so that we don't have that as part of it? And we find that information?
Well, I would, I would say Laurel had a reason for that motion. Game back to the whole million conversation. And so at least voting on that motion, if you disagree with it, vote no. But then make another one. If that's the case, if it passes, it passes. And then the majority believe that that's the best way to go, as long as there's been enough discussion.
Laurel, did you?
I'll say aye.
Okay, so we're, we're voting then. I always thought you just unmuted because you wanted to comment, so.
Oh, sorry.
We're ready to vote? And we'll go with Laurel, start with you then. Aye, okay. Charlie? Thank you. Patty?
Aye.
Thank you. And Heidi?
I'm going to say no.
Okay. John?
No.
Okay, Alicia?
I'm going to say no as well.
Okay. Okay. So it comes to me. I guess I'm going to say yes. So we're at a four three. It carries, but it's not comfortable. All right. I guess we're moving on. And the next on the agenda is warrant articles. John?
I'm wondering, can we get like a 15 minute break or something?
Yep. Everyone, thumbs up, 15 minutes, 10 minutes? What do you think?
10.
10? How's that work?
Yeah, for the purposes of doing this via Zoom, you know, any panelists or anybody, you know, go free to log on, come back in, you can also just, you know, view your audio, view your video, and you know, just kind of walk away.
I think if we just mute everything, turn thing, cameras off, mute.
Carrie, could I ask a question? I mean, it doesn't have to be for the whole board, everyone can take off, it's just a.
Sure. I was actually trying to work on Patty Farmer's question too, about the change in the tax rate for that extra $200,000, so.
Okay.
I was just going to try and share that, what the estimate would be.
Thanks.
Okay. So Carrie, my question was about proficiency enhancement program. And it's, the bulk of the budget, it's the whole budget actually, is RMS Tier 2. But we're not hitting that bucket this year.
Right, because of, because of the coronavirus, a lot of the staffing changed and they're not actually working that program this year.
Okay, so that program is in general education, or it's been, it's a reassignment. Okay.
Right, yep.
That was it.
Okay.
All right, for anybody who doesn't have a screen on or whatnot, if we can just start logging back in. So you have an idea if we see her who's not here. All right, so we're waiting about five more people.
So I have all the board here. One, two, three, four, five. No. Okay. All right, I think I have all the board now.
Yeah, we have all the board, we're just missing Carrie and Kelly.
Right.
May I make a motion?
Okay.
I move that we rescind our previous motion to fund the architectural services from the Building Maintenance Reserve Trust Fund.
Okay. And do you want to maybe tell people your thinking?
Sure. The contract is for what? $82,000? I would think that we can fund that from this year's budget, rather than from the Building Maintenance Reserve Trust Fund, which currently has $290,000 in it. And since I, I would rather save that if we can, should we have something we need to replace or repair next year?
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to rescind spending the facilities, the architectural from the Facilities Trust, or Reserve, pardon me, to taking out of this year's budget. We need a second.
Okay.
Charlie, there you are. Okay, I heard the voice, didn't see where the face was. All right, so we have a second for that. Is there any further discussion? Laurel's explained her thinking. Is there anyone who has more questions or comments about it?
I just have a comment, if I could. If the board chooses to do that, could the board also authorize any budget transfers needed to affect that purchase in this year's general fund budget?
Okay. So we could modify that motion to say that?
Okay, so I move that we rescind our previous motion to fund the architectural services from the Building Maintenance Reserve Trust Fund and authorize the business administrator to make the necessary budget transfers to achieve that.
Okay, thank you, Laurel. Charlie, you're still good with that? Okay, thank you. All right, is there any other comments or discussion? I'm not seeing any hands, so I'll do a roll call vote. Patty?
Aye.
Thank you, Alicia.
Yes.
Thank you. Heidi?
Yes.
Thank you. John?
Yes.
Thank you, Laurel.
Aye.
Thank you, Charlie.
Aye.
Thank you, and I say aye, so that's seven zero zero.
When you asked about changes to the agenda.
Yes.
I do have a change to the agenda. I have a nomination.
Yes, a blue sheet?
Yes, of course, I don't have the name in front of me. Sorry.
That's okay, Nick does. That's okay, Nick does.
Yeah, just give me one second, I pull that information up.
Okay, while that's happening, Charlie?
Yes, I just wanted to say something. And that is that part of the reason we have a surplus every year is because our administrators really do a good job in terms of spending controls. And I just wanted to tell them that because of them, alright, they've got a good handle on expenses. They don't spend money unless it needs to be spent, and they spend it wisely. And so it's more of a budget issue as far as I'm concerned than a spending issue, because I think our administrators do a really, really good job.
Yes. Thanks, Charlie.
Alright, I did have the information. So this is, I probably, I'm hoping you're gonna get this last day break. Dakota Regipal, R E G E I M B A L. It's a part-time custodian at the middle high school. Effective start date will be January fourth of 2021.
Alright, thank you.
And will we accept that nomination?
Okay, thank you, Laurel. Who's second?
Patty.
Patty, thank you. Any conversation on that, or are we ready to vote? Not seeing hands, let's vote. Charlie?
Aye.
Thank you, Heidi.
Aye.
Thank you. John? You're muted. Press your...
Aye.
Thank you, Laurel.
Aye.
Thank you. Patty?
Aye.
And Alicia?
Yes.
Thank you. And I say aye, so that passes seven-zero-zero. Thanks very much for that. So I think now we're at the warrant article. Oh, wait, no, there was one other thing that I don't want to lose. Mike had asked about a waiver around the phone systems, I believe it was, for the elementary. Is that correct, Mike?
It was the phone system in Chromebooks, the bidding process form.
Okay, so could someone make a motion to that, or, and then we can discuss?
I'll make that motion that we waive the bid process for the purchase of those technology items.
Okay. Thank you, Heidi. I need a second. Was that Patty?
Patty.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on that? Seeing no hands, we'll go to roll call vote. Charlie?
Aye.
Thank you, Laurel.
Aye.
Thank you. Heidi?
Aye.
Thank you, Alicia.
Yes.
Thank you, John.
Yep.
Thank you. Patty?
Aye.
Thank you. And I say aye, that carries seven-zero-zero. Okay, now, warrant articles. What do we have? Any? I don't think we do, do we? But...
Do we want to do anything with the student services? From surplus?
I'm a fan of that, simply because, just to Charlie, just because, for a variety of reasons, costs continue to go up. And four-hundred-thousand dollars, I don't think we put anything in place last year because we felt pretty good about it. But, so it's been a couple of years since we've done that, and, you know, I think that those, to stay with the kind of rate of increases for out-of-district placements, it's wise to put some money in there.
So I'd suggest that we increase it by a hundred K with the funding to come from the rent balance.
Alright, I'm really sorry, but you're coming through a bit fuzzy for me. I don't know if anyone else is having that. But could you just restate what you said?
I have no...
It might be your piece, Charlie.
Yep.
It might be your earpiece, using that as the microphone.
Hear me?
Yes.
Better.
Okay. Yeah, what I'd suggest is we have a warrant article to add a hundred K to the services fund, reserve fund for out of the year-end unspent balance.
Okay. Alright, and did we get a second, John?
Yes, I seconded. And I'd just like to say, Charlie, I don't know how that affects your hearing, but boy, it was a whole lot easier to hear you without, you know, with the way you just did it. And by the way, Mike, your microphone is terrible also.
Well, I don't know whether it's the microphone or the battery running down.
It's been bad since this morning.
Oh, it must be the microphone.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Is there a discussion? I'm not seeing any hands, so roll call. Oh, Nick?
Yeah, just a side note for some of the board members that are like staying muted and trying to unmute. If you press the spacebar, it will temporarily unmute you, and then when you let go, it will, you don't necessarily have to fumble around with like muting yourself and unmuting yourself. So just press the spacebar and hold it for the length that you want to speak and then let go.
Thanks. Okay, so I was going to a roll call vote. I'm starting with Patty.
Aye.
Thank you. Alicia?
Yes.
Thank you. John?
I said yes, but the spacebar didn't seem to work for me.
Okay, alright. Heidi?
Yes.
Thank you, Laurel.
Yes.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yes.
Thank you. And I say yes, so that carries with warrant article for the special services, seven-zero-zero. I saw in the chat that someone said we probably need a warrant article if we're going to use that two-hundred from the...
Haven't we voted on that already?
Well, I thought that that was part of what your motion was, but I didn't know if... So.
I think so.
I think that is. Okay. Anything else under the warrant articles?
I have a question for Ruben. Ruben, did you receive the basis for a request for quote package from Todd?
So, no, but John has helped me continue to work on that. So, John, would you be able to update us with a little bit of where the conversation's going around parking? Relative to the individual that Laurel just talked about, Todd, Todd Crotto?
Right. I spoke with Todd, I believe it was yesterday, and he was giving me some information on the middle school, high school parking lot, some estimated cost. And he mentioned that reclaiming the parking lot, which means not going down two feet or anything, but reclaiming it and having someone come in and actually crush the existing asphalt for the base and repaving maybe a couple inches. He said, based on all his, and he actually measured himself, came over and measured the area, he said it would be around three-hundred to three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars tops to do the parking lot. And that included some of the curbs and sidewalks in the back. And that was going, starting from the basketball court, kind of the courtyard, where the silo is, all the way down to the back and around, and the whole parking lot side. He said three-hundred, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to reclaim it and do it that way. He hasn't gone over to JGS yet, but he said he would go over there, he's hoping, next week, soon, and measure it and give me an idea for that parking lot also. RMS, if we can get some measurements on that, that's not in bad shape, maybe that's a shim type of situation, but he would also give me some figures if I can give him some lengths, measurements, which I'll give him next week. And I'm also gonna try and ask him if he has the time to maybe spend a half hour on one of our facility committees, maybe the 21st, and try and see if he can't, at least maybe come on and just give us a little presentation of what he found.
Thank you.
Then I would I would propose in addition to the Building Maintenance Reserve Trust Fund to do this work to be funded from surplus.
Is that, is that, have it done before the end of the year? Is that what you're proposing?
No.
Next summer or something.
There's a good point. If we had a warrant article... Yeah, well, it wouldn't matter. We would fund the Building Maintenance Reserve Trust Fund. We could do it this fiscal year, paying it out of the Building Maintenance Reserve Trust Fund, most of it anyway. We've got two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand. But I would say that that's good news to hear, that it's in okay enough shape to reclaim rather than full-depth reconstruction. And it is something that comes up frequently in terms of safety. So if the board agrees, I would propose that we have a warrant article to increase the Building Maintenance Reserve Trust Fund three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, with the understanding that it's going to be used for pavement improvements at the middle school, high school.
Ruben?
One second.
Well, mine's a clarification question. Is that to fund it or to fund it out of surplus?
To fund, to increase the Building Maintenance Reserve Trust Fund by three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and to fund that from surplus.
John?
Okay, so I think I did understand this, John, but was Todd saying that that would include both the main parking lot to the right of the school as you're facing it, and also the employee parking lot on the left-hand side?
When you say employee, you mean by the facility garage?
No, I'm talking about the area next to the school.
Right, it's the whole parking area to the right side looking at it, the parking, all the way to the back. And on the left side with the silo is, all the way down, then around to the back, for the whole area.
Okay.
It doesn't include JGS. I mean, that's a whole separate number that I'm waiting for, so.
Correct.
We understand.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, any other question?
About half that or less for the JGS.
Alright, are there any other questions regarding what Laurel's proposed?
Did she say three-fifty or two-fifty?
Three.
Three-fifty.
Three-fifty.
Okay, so adding an additional three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
To be paid out of surplus.
Okay. And then the only other item I wanted to comment on is to use the Building Maintenance Trust Fund, we have that we need a warrant article if we're spending more than a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. I thought that legally we did not.
Well...
That we are a legal agency to expend. Right, the DRA considers it an advisory, but I'm just, there was a warrant article that did pass that language.
So yes, the board can vote to suspend the funds. That being the case, there was a fair amount of conversation about it, and I think that there's a different level of intent for that advisory.
Okay.
I'm not sure I'm not sure the board was aware that it was advisory when it was done. It's kind of my point, in all honesty. I would, you know... So legally, yes, you can go ahead and do it, and it makes sense to get the work done. But there was that warrant that passed. Sorry, article that passed.
So in light of that, maybe it would be good to have some language clarifying the intent of the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand and requesting that authorization, because I think that repairing the parking lot, especially at that reduced cost, will be a popular item.
I think you would need two different warrant articles, one to fund it and one to spend.
Okay.
Except, again, not to be speaking out of both sides of my mouth, which I am totally doing. You don't have to have a warrant article because it is advisory. So I just didn't, you know...
You're just advising.
As long as you all, because I would hate, this is what I would hate to do. I would hate to have a warrant article that doesn't pass, and then you do it anyway. So when is that specific? Because quite frankly, if you can do it, nothing should be stopping you from making the safety changes to that parking lot. There's no one supporting this, I guess.
So you've been, you're suggesting we don't go the warrant article route, just do it?
I'm saying that the board has a responsibility of upkeep to facilities and for safety items. And I don't think you can get, you should let anything get in the way of making sure that we're providing a safe environment and upkeep to the facilities, because that's being a good steward of your taxpayer funds. So I just know that I'm only advocating for you to have the conversation. I'm not trying to prolong this. I'm advocating for you to have a conversation about it as a board to make sure you feel like you're all on the same page, or feel like we're moving forward with that because of the prior articles that were done. I think it's kind of a process.
So if it's advisory, that tells me that the board has the authority to expand funds from the reserve fund. Is that correct? Okay, if that's correct, we can ask for an additional three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for coming out of surplus for the capital reserve fund, and then we can spend it on anything we want. And it does not have to be a parking lot. That's my understanding. It's just like increasing the funding for student services. If there's a need for it, and a board sees that need, then we can expend it for that need.
So Charlie, you're saying then the warrant would just say that we would like to take that amount from that fund?
No, I'm saying that we want to take that amount from surplus and put it in the fund.
Oh, right, okay, that's correct.
Okay.
But we don't have to specify what we want to do.
If we want to expend from the fund, we can do that at any time during the year.
Okay, so...
That's my two cents.
So I feel like you're correct legally, but it's pointed out that there was, in fact, a warrant article. And I think it was Heidi's husband who put a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in there, because I think that was an amendment.
It was an amendment because it was quite low, correct?
Right. And subsequently, we found that it was only advisory. But Ruben has pointed out that since there was indeed a motion passed later found to be advisory, whether or not that could create an uncomfortable situation. So the reason I'm replying at all, because what you said, Charlie, does make sense, but the advantage of, and maybe it could be an explanatory... But the advantage of, and maybe it could be an explanatory note, that we're asking for this additional three hundred and fifty thousand with the intent of paving the parking lot, which is in fact, in everybody's interest and a very popular move.
I think that's a wise decision to do it as an explanatory basis when we present the warrant article. The wording and the wording on it doesn't have anything about a parking lot.
All right, Ruben?
That sounds right.
Ruben?
So to, for, so the place to put the information that you're talking about, John and Charlie, is in the voter guide?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so we've had a lot of discussion, we had like a proposal, but I think we actually need a motion, right, on this?
Didn't Laurel make a motion?
Uh, it said, she said proposal. I, maybe she, maybe I missed it, but I thought she said proposal. Laurel, you're muted.
You're muted. So I move that we have a warrant article to add three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the building maintenance reserve trust fund to be funded from this year's unexpended funds.
Okay.
Second.
John, second it, thank you very much, both of you. Any further discussion or are we ready to vote? I see no hands. Charlie?
Aye.
Thank you. Laurel?
Aye.
Thank you. John?
Aye.
Thank you. Heidi?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Alicia?
Yes.
Thank you. Patty?
Yes.
Thank you, and I say yes, seven zero zero. Thank you. Um, anything else? All right. Uh, we have a calendar to adopt.
Oh, do, do you want me to provide input on the difference in that two hundred thousand dollars that it would make? Yes, okay, let me, um, so if the two hundred thousand dollars was returned and that was additional revenue returned, it would be a difference of, this is now an estimate because we don't have actuals, it would be nineteen cents for Jaffrey residents per thousand and fifteen cents for Ringe residents. Which would be about thirty seven dollars for Jaffrey on a two hundred thousand dollar home and thirty dollars for Ringe on a two hundred thousand dollar, dollar.
All right, so that was Patty, you had asked that question, correct? Okay. All right, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Um, all right, so I think we're done with the warrant, the, uh, calendar. I think the real thing here is being clear that we all agree that it's better to not do the eleven twenty-nine, I think it is, but to do the in-person, um, following our, our protocols, um, uh, for the deliberative session. So, I guess I just want to survey the, the group and, and we kind of talked about this at the last board meeting, but I, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page on that first. So just quickly, Charlie, do you agree with that, in-person?
Uh, yes, I do. Uh, I also believe that the, uh, after talking to a Ringe selectman, that they are not gonna, uh, implement the HB eleven twenty-nine.
Okay. Good, thank you. Um, John?
Just, you know, if we're gonna vote on this, I'm not exactly clear on what you're, um, proposing or saying that we are agreeing to do.
Right, so we had talked at the last board meeting about, Nick explained the eleven twenty-nine process that, um, that that is where you would have like a first meeting and a second meeting. They'd be remote, there would be the, um, time, they'd be, they have to be within a week of each other, that, um, there has to be then electronic communication or a phone call, whatever, but somehow either voice recording or written, we have to have, um, people make comments and then we have to read those out at the next meeting and then there's a, uh, on the voting, the very first warrant has to be, do you agree with this process? If that gets voted down, everything gets voted down within the warrants. And we had said that we thought it was cleaner, easier to do the best we can to maintain normalcy and that the face-to-face route with the social distancing is the, um, the way that would be the, the kind of smoother way. But I wanted to make sure that we were in agreement with that because we have to get kind of dates out, um, procedures, all that, it has to be publicized.
Okay, so thank you for that clarification and, uh, because I, I heard eleven twenty-nine and I thought I was hearing a date, which had already passed, so now I understand. And, um, so what you're proposing is that we have a normal meeting in lieu of that?
Yes, deliberative session be deliberative session, rather than try and do it like this.
Okay, and a, a question for clarification, would that be done with people being required to wear masks? And if so, would that be enforced and if so, how and?
Right. So those are the, those are the protocols that we get to put in place. And, you know, what, just when people like come in, there's still the checking in, making sure that the, or, you know, the folks who are speaking are the ones who are the registered voters within the town, that kind of stuff. And at that point, you know, there'd be masks. Um, that would be something we could talk about, that if we had someone who refused to wear a mask and follow the school's protocols, you know, where, what is the alternative option? Is there, um, you know? So it's that kind of thing, we have to discuss that, but we want to make sure we are all on board with doing it as normal as possible.
Yeah, and so the reason I ask that question is because, um, certainly the eleven twenty-nine process sounds complicated. It could be disincentive in a number of ways for some people, and it could make our lives crazy. On, on the other hand, it was certainly, I'm sure, offered as an alternative to acknowledge the concern that some people have about being required to come together in an unsafe situation. And unlike voting, which we've just gone through and which was timed so that a very limited number of people were allowed in, we're, we're gonna be in a situation where we're gonna ask people to come together all at the same time, so. I mean, I think it gets, I think deciding to go, to, to leave the eleven twenty-nine process and to reject that, you know, it sort of makes sense to, at the same time, establish our principles on how we would conduct this first
Right.
large-scale gathering.
Right, so I, I mean, we have, uh, certain guidelines with our schools that say, you know, when you are inside, you wear a mask, right?
Right.
So in either case, I think that we just need interactive, uh, proper research, which, you know, we're, we're performing with state RSA and all these other things, the, the component is, uh, you know, for posting some of these first meetings, we gotta get notices in the paper early January, so.
Right.
Well, and presumably the kids will be back to school that coming Monday. So I think that it's a good move for us to move towards that and I, this is just the most, this one makes the most sense. So I would like to make a motion that we continue with our, if we have to have a motion, that we continue with this calendar as stated.
Okay, thanks Patty. Heidi?
A question about the locations that are listed on the calendar right now with RMS. Um, will we just be changing that to reflect that we're doing things at CHS music room until deliberative?
Right, so deliberative, I would say we need to do that in the largest space, which is RMS. Um, and that we have our public hearing, we would do that just at the beginning of a board meeting like we always do. Um, but that could, so we would be either remote or in the music room option for that. It's only the deliberative that we would do face-to-face and, um, hang on for a second. Um, I don't, there's not a craft here.
No.
No, no. I'm not aware of one.
Okay, thanks.
Um, sorry, um, that threw me a bit, um. So, everything would be pretty normal, the deliberative would be ha, be held at RMS because that's the biggest space and it's easiest to social distance there.
Yeah, some of these dates have already passed, obviously, in our calendar. December, we're partly through, we've done a lot of these meetings, uh, similar to how we structured the school board, uh, calendar. We've just put a, uh, I put a note on the top or somewhere that says, you know, that all meetings are broadcast or at least all normal meetings are broadcast via Zoom. I don't think that we can be able to offer the same level of Zoom, we created this for, uh, like an Olympic session. I think that's gonna be kind of one way or the other, uh, you know, obviously broadcasted. So that, that, this color bring here for location, uh, we can obviously alter that to better fit what we're doing right now. So I don't know if the motion wants to kind of state that to some degree. Uh, just because obviously this calendar as it is right now, it's, uh, you know, pretty close to accurate, but are those, you, there's, there's to be additional consideration for part of the actual meeting space that we have to alter a bit.
Right, that answer, what you were asking, Heidi?
It does, and I guess I'm okay moving forward with in-person, but I'm pretty concerned about what would happen if people choose not to wear masks? And I just, I don't know, I feel like we need to have a really strong plan for that.
Yes. I, I think we're all, you know, concerned and want to make sure that we keep everyone as safe as we can. And, um, you know, if people choose to not have a mask, what can we offer them? Um, so that they can be part of the process, but we can all stay safe the same. So it may be that we, you know, we have an audio broadcasting, but I think there's also something, isn't, I don't know, Charlie, maybe I'm off base on this, but I thought there was something about in order to do the comments, um, motions, things like that, that they have to be physically present?
What are you talking about?
Deliberative.
Um, I'm not sure that there has to be present, but not necessarily in the same room.
Right, no, I got that. But, but maybe within the facility or at the facility.
Correct.
So it could be outside.
Could be, could be in a different room. I mean, you could set up with masks and no masks.
Right, so we.
Depends on how Bob wants to do it.
Right, so those are details that we do need to figure out. Um, but I think everyone is on the same page with keeping people safe, so they will be figured out. So, again, I, do we need an actual motion here for this? I know Patty, you did make one, but I'm not sure we need, I just think we need to know direction.
Traditionally, you guys do approve this calendar, it has not yet been approved, it's still, it's a draft form, so, uh, you know, following process, it would make sense to approve it.
Right, so why don't we approve this proposed, um, calendar? And then, you know, we can work on the, some of the detail.
Yeah, I, I, so if I can talk to Bob, we can, we can do the research on this and see what we need to do, actually for deliberative, but if we have a direction, we can perform.
Right, so I've been working with Bob and Bob is also in favor of doing it, um, you know, face-to-face. Uh, but yes, I haven't talked the detail, he's been talking with people at the state, he was supposed to get back to me. I hadn't heard back from him as of this morning. So John, I saw your hand.
Um, yes, I, just one thing, I would like to say that, uh, it's really hard for me to understand what Nick is saying. You know, I'm catching about half of his words. And then I'd also like to say the calendar that we had in front of us still says, uh, praetorarium, am I right? Has that been changed?
That's what we just were saying, that.
I know we said it, but.
Yeah, all, it's been a little bit, I don't know if this is the better for you, John, um, but essentially what we would do is, is if we approve this calendar, just everything that we just had for discussions about locations, about Zoom and all these things, those would be worked in. So I, I would just, I would appreciate if the motion was altered slightly just to accommodate those components that we've been discussing. You know, because it's not purely a, an approval of the calendar that we have presented, there, there are slight alterations, but it's, I mean, Carrie's got her.
Yep. Carrie?
Thank you, yes, I just want to make sure that if the locations are going to be different for deliberative session or the budget hearing or the, well, the vote wouldn't be different. But, um, that those are identified because I need to put those in the public notice that have to be published in the paper.
Right, right, so I think we're saying deliberative at Ringe and that the public hearing would be here at the high school using the music room. Okay, so, so Patty?
I'd be happy to amend my, my motion was to accept the calendar. I'll amend that to say with logistics to be finalized prior to publication.
I'd like to second Patty's motion.
Thank you, Patty and Alicia. Any further discussion on this or shall we go to a vote? I don't see any hands, so Charlie?
Aye.
Thank you. Laurel?
Aye.
Thank you. Heidi? Okay, I didn't hear it, but I think.
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Thank you, Alicia?
Yes.
Thank you, Patty?
Aye.
Thank you, and I think it just leaves me and I say aye, so seven zero zero. And are there any other public comments? Any hands up, Nick?
I'm not seeing anybody, anybody, but just a quick reminder, anybody who was left in the attendees, uh, feel free to, uh, where is Karen? Wish that, uh, we could acknowledge you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that one, so what are you saying?
All right, uh, if I speak, I'll go.
Hand under the mic.
All right, I'm closer to the microphone. Uh, by the way, I think I've diagnosed the issue in here. Uh, we have a, uh, an electrical unit that I think is running heat and some air into this room. That's not something that's normally running during our board meetings. I think that it's picking up that additional sound and muffling it a bit just because of the quality of the microphones. So, um, if anybody wants to make a public comment, just raise your hand real quick and we would be happy to acknowledge you.
Yep, and while we're waiting to see if any hands raised, are there any other board matters? Not seeing any board matters, issues, okay. Nick, any hands? Okay, then I'll take a motion for adjournment. Okay. Motion for adjournment from Laurel. Uh, Charlie, you're gonna second it or Heidi, you did, okay? And all those in favor, raise your hand. Wonderful, we're adjourned, thank you everyone, and thank you administrators for putting up with us.
Yes, thank you.